Yeah, it's hot. Anybody else hot in here?
It is.
It's not just the Valentine's decorations, it's actually hot. All right. Thank you very much, Councilor Peter Angelo. Next up, we're looking for an adoption of the minutes from our council meeting. First, oh, hold on, our clerk has a comment first. Yes, Mr. Clerk.
There is revision to the minutes in your additions. It's page one related to Counselor Wing's conflicts from the last meeting. We've corrected those.
Okay, so that's been noted. So we're looking for a motion. Receive the minutes. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Morocco, that we receive and move the amended minutes. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Now, we're looking for disclosures of pecuniary interest. Do we have any disclosures tonight? Counselor Wing?
I'm going to declare on the operating budget, because first of all, there is the Winter Festival of Lights items in there, and that relates to my husband's employment. But there's also battlefield school matters all the way through, and it touches multiple departments, I mean, even the fire departments and their training. So I asked Mr. Harrison to let me know where these items all are, and I don't have that information, so just to be safe, I'm declaring on the entire operating budget.
Okay, so we've got conflict declared by Counselor Wing on those two items. Are there any other disclosures? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move into our budget portion of tonight's meeting. That'll take us from now until 7:00 PM, and I ask our budget chair, Counselor Peter Angelo, he'd come up here and chair this part of the meeting.
Thank you, worship, and I know our Director of Finance, Mr. Harrison, has a few budget presentations for council tonight, and I believe he's going to be starting with the 2013 operating budget, so I'll pass it over to Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight's presentations include the operating budget, an update on the fees and service fees, fees for service and grants, and then, of course, the introduction of the capital budget, which you have received the binders to. In your handout is a revised presentation, just some edits that were done after that note. But tonight's objectives is really, as we indicated the last review, was we have gone through the budget on the expenditure side, and we've gone through by department. We are now at a point where we have updated revenue, non-assessment-related revenues for best actuals to adjust to ensure that the budget numbers are correct. And then, we'd also like to go through tonight the impact of the reassessment at the end of the calendar year. Then, we have made some revenue enhancements. We've also looked at some expenditure cuts. The CAO directed the finance staff to look for some expenditure reductions, and then we'll discuss where we're at right now and what the next steps are. So the next chart, this is a synopsis of trying to compare year over year and some of the challenges. Again, I guess this is really for council's understanding at a high level. What this is showing is, to generate the same amount of taxation as we did with our assessment at the end of 2012 and 2013, there's been some changes. And basically, this shows by class the impact of the assessment changes that have happened. In 2012, the ending role amounts, basically, the taxable income or the income the city received from property taxes from the residential component was about $56.36, commercial $36.43, multi-res $4.46, industrial $2.19, and then the other classes would be, including like managed forest and pipelines, et cetera. So that balances out to 100 percent. We can see, though, with the return of the role, and what that means is, the return of the role is, any reduction that have occurred on properties year-end or maybe related to assessment appeals are all factored in. And you can see that there's been a shift from off of the commercial class and onto primarily the residential class, but also onto the other classes. And you can see that is done. This has a significant impact as we go farther along in our discussions, but you can see that the return of the role, because we have such a significant commercial assessment base, these properties are obviously, the assessment valuations are based on a variety of methods, usually income approach, and you can see that there are been some fairly significant changes in that area. So moving to the next, we can quantify that, and what I indicated is, never mind the net impact of $31, that's just a rounding issue, but really, when you look at it, if we were to leave everything the same as was, we would see that the, because of the shifts in the assessment class, again, this is at the high level, this isn't at the individual property level, this is at the high level, you can see there's a shift off of the commercial class, onto the residential class, onto the multi-res class, onto the industrial class, and onto the other classes. So you can see, no matter what we do, if we were to raise the same levy, we would have these types of shifts. Now, in normal years, there are mitigation, in normal reassessment years, there are mitigation tools that the region has, and that's through taxation policy. This trend, though, that you see here is unique to Niagara Falls. This has not continued across the region, and as you recall, the region has tax policy, which they'll be working through for the rest of the month and come up with final numbers, final amounts at the regional level. We're hoping that that would be sometime in March. But you can see that left of its own avail, this is the impact between classes. So, moving on, we can see that back in November, when we originally moved the chart, please, thank you, when, we can see that originally, when we presented the budget way back in November, and we started working our way through, these impacts on the revenue side were not in. We've tried to lump categories in the same area. You can see the taxation and PILs are lumped together, similarly licenses, permits, rents, user fees. And you can see that this hasn't changed from what was in your original budget binder. We had, at the time, a small revenue increase of approximately $50,000, which was less than, less than, not even significantly close to 1 percent. And then, on the expenditure side, we saw some of the challenges that we had, labor costs, again, approximately 3 percent. When you look at all of the areas, we did talk about overtime being reduced, but we did have some challenges both in the salaries and the benefit component. We saw that there was really no nominal increase in the debt interest payments, and we did see that there were some increases in some of the areas in materials and contracted services. The rents, minor, relatively minor object code had gone down slightly, and so when we looked at all of it, we had about a 3.67 percent. One of the things that, in this presentation, is different as we had approved earlier on, is that we're going to have separate budget for parking, and so that'll be, at the next council meeting, we'll be going through that. So what we have as a bottom, when we started this process, was $3.5 million to reconcile, to get to a balanced budget. And so, this is what we presented, and we presented the bottom half of that, the expenditure side. So, moving to the next chart, we looked at, now that we have the assessment figures in, we tried to indicate what we could do to mitigate some of that from the revenue side. We had considered a 3 percent levy increase, which is consistent with prior years, it's not inconsistent with prior years, and that's what we looked at as a starting part. We also adjusted for the user fees, the investment income and internal charges for, to match more of what our year-end numbers were, and then, again, the PWA revenues, we were able to adjust that upwards. So when we look at the impact of this, we can see, on the next chart, the impact here is quite shocking result. As I indicated, we had put in a levy increase of approximately 3 percent, or of 3 percent. That normally, in years gone by, would have increased the first line, which is your taxation and the PIL revenues. One of the things that I haven't mentioned yet is, the PIL assessments have been significantly reduced. One to talk to the property has been significantly reduced, and the impact of that is included in that. So clearly, the levy increase of 3 percent, which is approximately $1.5 million, has been totally eaten up by the reduction of the PIL.
Sorry, Mr. Harrison, do you already have a 3 percent increase?
Yes.
You already have a 3 percent increase?
Yeah, 3 percent levy increase is built into that number.
Built into the taxation and PILs.
Built into the $68 million number.
Okay, do you know what it would be without the 3 percent?
That would be somewhat, that would be about 67.2, roughly.
67.2.
Yeah, it's about $1.5 million.
Okay.
So, we are looking at, so when we go down, we can see that the revenues have been adjusted accordingly. We did, in one of the areas where you can see a significant reduction, is in the transfers account. We had anticipated, we have been putting a transfer to reserve for a potential reduction, and that's shown in the transfers, that 10.4 percent is primarily related to that. So you can see that the true impact of the assessment figures is shown in here, including a 3.5, a 3 percent levy increase. So although we started with a $3.5 million reduction, even with the 3.5, 3 percent levy increase, we're back to 3.1. It's had about a $350,000 difference. Moving to the next chart, so our staff was entrusted to look at some budget mitigation objectives for tonight. The direction that finance received was to maintain level of services. We were directed to keep spending, expenditure increase at 1 percent, which is below inflation, and as I've said in numerous other budget meetings, our inflation is not consistent with the inflation outside. We have other types of expenditures which are not really related to how the CPI is calculated, fuel and hydro and labor wages. One of the things that we talked about was to try to implement the transit enhancements. Again, the transit enhancements are mitigated with some revenue increases, so again, we did try that. We maintained the capital reserve, capital transfers. In previous years, municipalities have attempted to find solutions by mitigating, reducing capital transfers on their capital budget, as we've talked about and will get into the capital budget. We are, we have a responsibility to ensure that the capital replacement of our assets are done in a timely and ongoing fashion. Delaying those any future is not really an option at this point. And because we hadn't talked about the fees for services, we were indicating no changes for the fees for service. Moving to the next slide, we can walk through some of the changes. I'll detail, in your budget, you can see, I'll touch briefly of what we came up with. In the CAO office and support, there are money that was set aside for some strategic initiatives. We reduced that by $13,000. Basically, that is a reduction of 60 percent. Computer training in HR was reduced by approximately 30 percent. Health and safety compliance, this is audits of our buildings. We had anticipated that we would be doing these types of things in regards to health and safety concerns, and we reduced that. Conferences corporate-wide, in the front of your binder, there is a $130,000 corporate expenditure, it's detailed by conferences, this is something we provide every year. The number went up by $30,000 year over year because we had to add, among other things, we had to add our potential travel to the FCM conference in Victoria this year. As the host in 2014, we did have to have a staff presence. So we've reduced it to 30, by $30,000 back to the level that it was last year, and there'll be a reprioritization amongst all city staff about what conferences are going to be attended. In the data, the voice communications area, which is cell phones and any type of modular expenditure, we reduced it by $16,000. Fire suppression, one of the things that we put in the budget was a pre-hire for the anticipated Station 7, and we've taken those positions out. Again, this would be, is something that we would do at the time that the station is often functional, or better, closer to that point. Professional development, there was a potential reduction in the amount of money. This is primarily for developing staff, that's about a 50 percent, 20 percent reduction. The paved surface maintenance, this is an area that we tried to put new money into the budget this year. We had budgeted approximately double what we had in the past, and in this particular case, it increased by $288,000. Now, these are things that we require, these are operating expenses to fix the roads, we needed to do a survey of our bridges, and so we had added $288,000. We reduced that by $100,000. Again, we had anticipated starting to add a tree inventory program, to start to do an inventory of all municipal trees throughout the city. We took that out this year. Advertising, professional development, that's just a small, that we weren't, we didn't spend that last year, and we put it to more to what the actual is. Transit maintenance, snow plowing, again, this is some of the snow plowing in their area for bus stops, various things like that. We had a positive variance this year, and we reduced it down to actual. And advertising is another area that we had anticipated spending a lot, a bit more money this year, talking about service enhancements in other areas, and we reduced that. The VTS system, originally, when we undertook the VTS system, we had indicated that the net cost to the municipality would be no more than what we had contributed, what was contributed under the previous, when we ran an independent system from during the summer months with that of the Parks Commission, and so we reduced that down to the other area. I know that Mr. Drin and his staff have worked on a number of operating reductions to, on the, over the course of the shoulder months, and so that was included in that. Another opportunity in that is, we do have a reserve fund that was intended to offset any implementation expenditures, and that is available to us as a last resort. Service center optimization study, this was a study that we had put in the budget. We recognized that the service center has limited use, not that it's going to be replaced next year or anytime soon, but we did want to use that as a planning tool for any future type of investment we have for our service center. Engineering studies, we had put in an additional $50,000, we reduced that by half. Moving to the next item, we can see that the city floor flow had originally been put in, these are the refurbishments that would be necessary. Again, that is something that we took out of the budget this year. Hopefully, we can make do for another year with that. The materials, Santa Claus Parade was an addition that we reduced. The Stanford Jack Bell Utilities, again, we have to keep a minimal amount of utilities in those arenas, even though they are not used, and we reduced the amount that's budgeted. Chippewa Arena, that's in the pools maintenance area, these are under spent amounts in previous year that we've been able to secure and reduce. The Niagara Falls Library Board, the library board had put in a request for, at 3.54 percent. We reduced that request to 1.5 percent of what the grant was last year, to be consistent with other municipal entities. In speaking with, unfortunately, the library manager was not able to be there today, tonight, to speak to any of these, but this is a significant amount for them to be reduced. Museum services, again, it's a startup of a full-year operation, and again, they've reduced some of the material expenditures. Historical Drummingville CIP, as you know, the historical Drummingville CIP amount is now, that money's been used up, that's a product, I guess, of the success of the program, but the money's been used up. Our staff had put in some additional money to continue. I know our staff continues to get inquiries about future grants or other programs to assist in that area. Unfortunately, that was reduced. The Gateway CIP, this is a new program that we're partnering with the region on, and unfortunately, we had to reduce that as well. Corporate-wide grants, and I know that we had a report at the last council meeting, and we'll be dealing with that in the, in the fee-for-service grants presentation next. But that basically is a reduction of the grants as we have provided in the past. And allowance for tax write-offs, we've reduced the amounts that we put into the tax write-off accounts, so that balances out to 1.27. That effectively brings our spending in at 1 percent, 1.04 percent increase, which, again, in today's economy, with the commitments that we already have, this is, that is, that is a significant amount of operating cuts. So moving to the next chart, I can tell you that the next chart highlights what we had indicated, the balance required to mitigate was $3.1 million. The proposed spending reductions is 1.27, and so where we're stuck right now is that additional expenditures required of $1.8 million. And this is attributable back to, directly back to the reductions in the assessments in our PIL area particularly, but also some of the, some of the shifts in the, the shifts really don't have an impact on the bottom line, because, again, as we indicated, the shifts kind of impact inter-class transfers, we did put in a 3 percent levy increase. So moving to the final, final chart, we can see that, as I, as 1.04, we had a 3 percent levy increase, we have an unfunded balance of 1.8, and we're, again, we're not at a point where we can pass the budget, but we are certainly at a point where we're going to go back and look for more reductions and more opportunities for expenditure increases. So if there's any questions or comments or direction, we certainly would be open to that. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Morocco?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Could you share to Mr. Harrison? Mr. Harrison, what I believe I'm seeing here, and if I just want to correct, is that the money that you've taken, the major cut and reduction, is basically what we are actually responsible for as a municipality, and that's the services that we provide to city in roads and maintain our infrastructure. We've actually reduced the paving surfaces, which is a huge issue with a lot of our residents and some of the roads that need this paving to take place. $100,000 is a pretty good chunk of change to take out of that spending, as well as to reduce the operating expenses by almost $300,000. I'm just wondering, where else have you done any cuts? I don't see what you've even touched for the fees for services, nothing's been cut there, but really, where we're looking is, we're just cutting and focusing on the services that we, as a municipality, need to provide.
The direction that I was given to reduce was to leave the fees for service alone until we had some direction from council as to what you wanted to do with the fees for services. As we've indicated, with the fees for services, these are all organizations that council has included as fee for services, meaning that they would be, they're integral to the council, to the city's operations, and all of the directors have met with the groups, and they have recommended the, those amounts in, for those services.
Well, I see that we do have a report back to, that you provided with a report, basically stating, what of those services are actually our municipal responsibility?
Yeah.
So I think I'll wait to hear that. You'll be bringing that forward?
Yeah, certainly, the next presentation, we'll talk about that, and we've identified in that chart, all those questions that you did have.
Very good, thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions, or Mr. Harrison? Counselor Gates?
Yeah, can we go back to the one slide that shows, these pages aren't numbered, so I can't tell you what page it is, but go back to the one slide that shows that the, there's going to be a shift from commercial to residential?
Impact on tax classes.
Yes.
That's the one I was going to talk about, too.
Yeah. And it's showing a 7.51 percent decline in commercial?
Yeah.
And maybe you could explain why that is?
Well, that's a product of the, again, the property tax calculation is a fairly complicated situation, but it's really, we're trying to make it as simple as we can. The assessment that was returned in the commercial class, if you go back to the previous slide, reduced by about 2 percent. It's the difference between 36 and 4. So if you think about it, we raised the same level of money, so where did we get the money? And it shifted, this happens at every, every year, at the end of every year, but it's most pronounced at the end of the, going into a new reassessment. So effectively, what's happened here, and this isn't, there are, don't get, don't misunderstand what's written there, there are commercial properties that had a significant assessment increase. There are residential properties that have had a reduction. But when you look at the overall number, the amount from that particular class, there has been a shift from the commercial class to the residential class. You know, I don't, we don't generally talk about individual properties at this, but there are a few significant properties that have significant reductions, and that's, that's skewed in the numbers. And what that really means is that almost a 2 percent reduction from the entire commercial class is moved on to the residential class. So going back to the first chart that you wanted me to look at first, is the 2.84 percent really is, if everything stayed the same, and we had the same levy as we did, a residential property that has the average assessment increase, we'd be looking at a 2.84 percent increase in their taxes, in their taxes, irrespective of what we do here on standing or any other mitigation tools.
Okay, thanks for that, but I guess my next question is, because I know you said you don't want to talk about it, but does that include the problem that we now have or being faced with the casino? Is that number in there?
The casino, the reduction, there's two casino properties, and they're both treated differently. The casino property that is included in these numbers is not a PIL, and that, that is a taxable property. The casino leases it off a property owner, and that's included in that number, and they had a significant reduction.
Can you say how much it was?
Casino property? Generally, we don't get into that, but I can give you a percentage, a percentage amount. Excuse me. I apologize, I just, it's a significant amount.
Yeah, I mean, our assessment values public?
They are, certainly. I'm just trying to...
Well, I wouldn't be hesitant to vote something that's gone through the process, and now we're paying the piper for what the decision was made at the Assessment Review Board.
Exactly.
Well, that's, and that's why I'm still talking on the issue, because I think, I want to find out if that's a case around the casino, and if that's what it is. We just went through a document that talks about, to Councilor Morocco's point, a number of reductions that are going to have to happen in the city because of the reduction of the amount of taxes that are going to come out of the casinos. And I've read a lot about it over the last little while, and I'm having a lot of problems with how the assessment can go down. You know, at the end of the day, that is, I know it's one of the seven wonders of the world. It's prime real estate, and how they can come up with a figure that that's going to go down makes absolutely no sense to me. The hardship that's going to bring on, the tough decisions that will be made by my fellow councillors, but the hardship that's going to be brought onto this community at a time when, you know, the casino, quite frankly, I think needs all the support they can get from the community. I don't think appealing the assessment and taking money out of this, out of the city to make sure our parks and the rest of our city is taken care of, I think it's, quite frankly, it's disgraceful. And, I mean, it's a hard word, but at the end of the day, I'm very, very disappointed in what the casino's done through their, through the government and the hardship that's going to come on, because we're going to have more tough questions on, as we go through this. But I think it's important, quite frankly, to Councilor Thompson's point, is the residents of Niagara Falls know exactly what's causing the problem. And the problem is the assessment of the two casinos that may put us in some tough hardship. And I think the casino and the government has to take another look at the reason for appealing. I know the appeal's been there since 2004. I think it's wrong. You know, if you talk to the residents here, it's like we won the lottery going back when the casinos were built. We're going to have full-time jobs, we're going to have, our taxes actually were going to go down. Remember, that was said over a number of years, and none of that's happening. And now, and now this, we're faced with this at a time when we already have a heavy tax load for a number of good reasons, but we do have a heavy tax load right now in the city. And for the casino to do this, I for one am very, very disappointed, not only as a resident of Niagara Falls, but I think as a city councillor, and I think we should be saying exactly who it is that's causing our financial hardships.
I apologize. Counselor Gates, I had the information in front of me, I just couldn't find it, flipping back between my glasses and my eyesight's not as good as it used to be. The smaller casino had, has seen from year over year, a 72 percent reduction in the assessment. And the larger casino has had 50.77, so 50 percent, 51 percent. If it was a penny, it would round up to 51, but it's a fifty percent.
Does anyone else have any questions? Mr. Harrison? Just to, go ahead, Counselor.
The Windsor situation, was that, that's been settled for a long time with the assessment in Windsor, with the casino. Was that a similar amount of 50 percent? Falls View just seems to be just unbelievable. And 72 percent reduction at Niagara?
I know.
That's just unbelievable.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, maybe I can shed some light on this, because we're not talking about past assessments here tonight. We're talking about the current assessment, because reassessment happened at the end of 2012, and these figures will carry us through for the next four years. So what's happened between 2008, when the last assessment numbers were prepared, and 2012, that assessed value has dropped on Falls View Casino by 50 percent. So the number we're going forward with for the 2013 budget, which we're dealing with, has seen about a 50 percent reduction in our assessed value. That probably means about $3 million? A little under $3 million less that we're going to be getting from the casino this year than we were last year. Casino Niagara, I'm not sure what that exact dollar amount is, but you can see the amount of revenue reduction is significant, and that's the problem we're faced with. And it's on a go-forward basis now with these new numbers that we've recently got, where that assessment for the casino, Falls View, has gone from $564 million of assessed value in 2008 to about $278 million assessment in 2012. It's about a 50 percent reduction. We don't believe it. We've already asked council that we're going to be appealing that number. We don't believe it. These numbers, now in fairness to the casino, the casino are not the ones that prepare the actual numbers. It's M-PAC, Municipal Property Assessment Corporation, which is a creature of the province. They're the ones that create the number.
Yes, but that has to be appealed.
Yes, and we are going to appeal it, and our belief is that that number is way too low.
The casino appealed years back.
We're talking, though, for this year's budget right here, we're talking about current numbers. So just putting that in perspective, and I, you know, I just want to share with you, with council, the difficulty we as a staff have been going through. You saw our numbers tonight. If we cut out that $1.2 million that we've outlined to you tonight in operating expenditure, that would put our overall spending at about a 1 percent, 1.04 percent spending increase. Now, when you base that on the increases we faced with our wages and benefits and our other insurance costs, our liability costs, we think a 1 percent expenditure increase is not a bad expenditure budget, is not a bad spending budget. We don't believe we have a spending problem. We believe we have a revenue problem. And that's faced here tonight by the fact that on one casino, one property alone, we're seeing close to $3 million less in revenue that we're taking in this year as opposed to what we took in last year. And I don't know how much more simpler we put that. The same issue, you have the number on the Casino Niagara, what the dollar number is? Because as Mr. Harrison was trying to explain...
An assessment?
Assessment. See, one property's an assessed value, and the other is a payment loop. So they're handled differently, but at the end of the day, the impacts are still there.
Yeah. The, the, the smaller casino went from, the return of the roll was $134 million previously, and it reduced to $36,517. Now, this is a full taxable property, so it has school taxes, regional taxes, and municipal taxes. That chart that you were looking at where it shows the shift, that million-dollar shift off the class, a large part of that million dollars is the reduction of that property on to the others. So, I mean, there are other properties that have had reductions. Again, it's not just strictly that, but a large portion of that. If you want to put this in context, our growth last year, that impact reported, and we're here, I believe, early part of January, December, they were quite glad to give us the figure that we had an almost a 1 percent growth, which was about $97 million. You factor in $97 million growth, that's what all the properties that grew, new assessment was offset by a reduction in one property. So certainly, that's not reflected. Now, just to clarify that, the PIL revenues are not included in this. This is just taxable property, taxable assessment properties that are full taxable, so, okay?
Mr. Harrison, other the $1 million drop in the commercial portion of the taxes, do you know how much of that would be represented by Casino Niagara?
I don't have it off the top of my head. I'd have to get that...
70 percent, 60 percent?
Well, again, it's not just one property. There are reductions across...
I understand.
Again, I think it actually, this, our municipal levy, it's probably about 60 percent of that.
Okay. So about $600,000?
Again, I'd have, instead of giving you a number, I'd prefer to give you, to get that quick, an accurate amount, so I'm on the record accurately.
Wouldn't you, wouldn't you have to add that to the $2.8 million loss from the PIL from the Falls View Casino?
No, the PIL properties are different.
No, I understand, but to realize the full impact of the assessment of both casinos going down?
We certainly, it certainly could, yes, that would be the case. But again, because this is taxable property, it's picked up by other, it's not going to be a reduction unless we reduce our levy. It's just that it's shifted to other property owners because it's a full taxable property.
Okay, understandable. Counselor Carrion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Along with Counselor Thompson and Gates and yourself, I find it hard to believe that the value of our casino could be cut in half in just a few short years. Have they shared the, all of the numbers with us on how they've arrived at that, or have they been able to justify that to us and to our consultants on how they arrive at those numbers?
Again, you know, it's M-PAC that has to defend the numbers, because they are the ones that do the valuations of all the properties across the board. M-PAC are the ones that defend and have shared us some information on how they determined that value. As CAO indicated, we have some problems with that valuation. And again, aside from appealing, we have no other recourse. It's, we had this, when the roll was returned, we had a meeting the day before we got, we received the actual document that showed what the true impact was. That was the ability for us to impact that number. There had been lots of talk throughout the, you know, there'd been lots of rumors about where it might end up, but we had no facts until the day before the delivery of the roll to us. And we have no other recourse other than if we disagree, is to seek adjudication through the ARP.
My question is, is do they share the way they arrived at the reduction with us, or do they just say, here's the reduction? So do they share the detailed analysis of how they got from here to here?
They showed, I mean, at the valuation, they walked us through how they, how they determined the value. And again, I'm not, and I think we had staff from the city, and we had regional staff as well, because the PIL property obviously impacts the region. This is a significant property. And, I mean, when you look at the value of $578 million, it's almost five times the value of anything in our municipality. There's only one other property in the area that is approximately half of that, so it's a huge issue. They did share us some numbers, and again, we, I'm not an expert in valuation, but I had some difficulties accepting what they said to us. And again, we will be seeking an opportunity to seek recourse.
Mr. Todd?
Well, I'm going to go one step further than the treasurer, probably shoot me for this one. Some of the things they did share with us that day, quite frankly, disturbed us pretty much. And part of it was that in M-PAC's calculation or figuring for the 2013 number, which we'll be faced with now for the next four years, they were factoring in a Toronto casino. Our argument was, how do you do that? How do you factor in a Toronto casino, when first of all, it hasn't even been voted on yet? Secondly, it's probably three to four years away from construction and opening. And you're factoring in reduced values for our property when that property may not exist probably past 2016, which is the next valuation period. We think it's totally unfair. That's one of the reasons we're appealing. That's one of our main factors we'll be carrying forward, and we pretty much told M-PAC that at that meeting. And I, quite frankly, I think it's totally ridiculous that they would be factoring to that extent an impact on a casino that won't even be there during this current valuation period.
They also had no residual value?
Well, the residual value is a whole other issue, and the residual value is based on previous assessments. But in their calculation, M-PAC does not use a residual value on any of their property calculations. So in other words, we believe there truly is residual value, or terminal value, whatever word you want to use, that if that property or that casino were to disappear tomorrow, what would the value of that property simply as a vacant property be? We truly believe there's value there. What M-PAC is saying is worth nothing. We think that's absolutely ridiculous. So these are some of the issues we have, and we think that number is way too low, and that's the basis, or some of the basis of what our appeal's going to be.
Hey, Counselor Mason?
Yeah, Mr. Todd, assuming we have the appeal in place, can you give us a timeframe when they would have a decision? I know that's probably throwing a crystal ball out there, but...
It could be years.
Years?
Honestly, if these things, these things can get dragged out for years or more.
So should we win, we might have a bonus down the road?
Well, what would happen is there would be, depending on the settlement, it'd be retro, if you, if you won in a sense and your assessment was increased, it would be retroactive payments made back to the date of the appeal, which would be the beginning of 2013.
Normally, they do take years? It's not like something can happen in a month or two months?
Not typically. I mean, if you have two willing partners, I guess three willing partners that are willing to sit down and negotiate something, it could. But certainly, when you get tied up in the long sort of legal process that Assessment Review Board hearings are, it typically could take years.
I'm sure with their assessment, the way it is now, they would like to take years before they settle, I'd assume.
Counselor Morocco?
Yes, I'd just cut to that point, too. So here we are, left with a reduction in our revenue, which leaves us still, you said it's a huge problem, that we have a reduction in our revenue, but also affects our expenses because it limits us to what programs and, you know, different services that we want to continue to provide. So it's almost like we're taking a cut. And I stand here and say that, you know, everybody has to take a cut, and now I think with this, oh, about the casino and the reduction just there, not even talking about, as Mr. Harrison talked about, other properties that we are also being reduced in the assessment, we're actually taking probably even a bigger hit than what we think. And my concern is that we have to be very frugal, and we just can't cut our own. We have to cut everywhere that we possibly can. And I hate to say it, and it's not saying that I don't think that some of the services and that aren't very well needed, it's just that we have to be very frugal, because this is a huge cut. We have no idea when the appeal will be heard, when we're going to find out whether we even get any money ever back. So I think that, I just want to make sure that people are well aware of where we are and the situation that we're up against when we're trying to say that we need to be very frugal and we have to make cuts, and that's my point.
Any other Counselor, I'm sorry, Counselor Gates?
Thanks, Counselor Rovick. I got a question here. You made a statement on, this is for Mr. Todd, you made a statement about M-PAC, so, and they're separate. How do you become a employee of M-PAC? Are they elected? Are they hired by somebody? Are they appointed? So how do they get their position?
Well, excuse me, Mr. Chair, M-PAC is a separate corporation. It's, it has a board of directors, and it's funded basically by the municipalities, I guess would be the best way to say it. And it's the agency or corporation that is responsible for setting all of the assessments across the province. They are their own corporation and their own board, and they're, the people that would be setting these valuations are employees of that corporation. So they're not, the board is appointed, the employees are hired as part of that corporation.
Okay, and I guess my question to you is, who appoints them?
The province appoints a number of them. I don't, I don't know, maybe the treasurer, I can't remember if the, if the regions have, can appoint a member to that or not, but I know the province, but maybe the treasurer knows.
I believe how it works is that the body that pays the M-PAC fee, in Niagara, the region pays the M-PAC fee, they have, they have appointment power to delegate persons onto the M-PAC board. At one point, one of the regional councillors was the chair of M-PAC a few years ago, now, yeah, and now I believe the mayor of Stratford is the chair, and they're appointed for a couple of year period. But certainly, we can get you more information on how that process works, but off the top of my head, I believe that's...
I guess my point was that I believe that there are a number of them that sit on the board, I did some reading today, that sit on the board through an appointment through the province. And I guess my question would be is that because of how this is really going to devastate our community, quite frankly, with this amount of money over a long period of time, and with the, having a new premier in office, would it be... And I guess my, my question would be is that because of how this is really going to devastate our community, quite frankly, with this amount of money over a long period of time, and with the, having a new premier in office, would it be unusual, or would it be a step that we could maybe proactive with and maybe meet with the new premier and kind of go over exactly where we're at? Is there a step in the process? Because the reality is, if they're appointing them, meaning the province, I'm sure they have a fair amount of, even though they say it's an independent company, I'm sure they have some, some kind of say on how it's run, just maybe another step that we could try because, and I may be drawing on a straw here, but I don't think it hurts to try when you're faced with these type of situations.
Well, there's a couple of different ways we could come at this. One is, you know, actually trying to meet with the MPAC people, but really, you're getting into your sort of appeal process. The other way to approach it is OLG, which right now controls the casinos, is a creature of the province, and that agency reports in through the Minister of Finance. So our next step would be to try and arrange a meeting with the new Minister of Finance, get in and talk about these issues, because we have, we've had audience before, previous ministers, trying to talk about these issues to see, you know, how do you, how do you get these kind of properties sort of in their own sort of regulation or off the normal tax? Because municipalities can't stand the fluctuations from assessment year to assessment year. So we've had these discussions in the past, and I think it's time to try to continue those.
Thanks very much.
Anyone else have any questions of Mr. Harrison or Mr. Todd? Moving forward then, Mr. Harrison, are you looking for some type of direction?
Certainly, we, unlike maybe our friends at the provincial or the federal levels, we have no ability to go to the budget that's unfunded or in a deficit position. So again, our staff will continue to look for opportunities to mitigate this. We'll be back, the next budget meeting is going to probably be on primarily the parking budget and the water and sewer budget, so we'd anticipate we'd be back at the end of March at the next, the next council meeting after that with some, some further recommendations on how we can, we can close that gap on the $1.8 million. Because again, you know, we need to go forward with the budget, and, you know, the, any assessment appeal, as the CAO indicated, would not have any immediate impact, so certainly we'd have to, have to look at those opportunities.
Okay. I know you're focused on the $1.8 million. The $1.8 million, it also has built into it an increase on the residential side of 2.8% because of the tax shift. And it also has built into that a 3% overall increase in the levy, which is a total increase of 5.8%. I'm not sure how much people are comfortable with a 5.8% increase. I know personally I'm not. So I mean, perhaps over the next little while, I mean, staff can look at ways that that can be brought down, and then options can be presented to council. That doesn't even include the, the other $1.8 million. Personally, I'm not a fan of taking money out of reserves simply to fund an operating budget. I don't think it's something we should ever do, so.
Sorry to interrupt, but I think that in this particular year, if you, in this particular case, if we were to use reserves, we would just be avoiding, we would just be delaying it for a year. This is a structural problem with our revenues that will not, that will not be adjusted. And if we were to use reserves, I mean, again, I mean, to go back to the budget cuts, all of those cuts are difficult in the areas that we've done it. Again, what we're saying is, is that, you know, over the course of years, and I think the CAO has mentioned this, this council and the previous council, they kept spending under, under significant, you know, we weren't, we weren't over 3%, we weren't over the rate of inflation. In one year, we were actually reduced spending. So we've been, we've been good in that regard. This is a, this is a curve ball that's been thrown at us that we have to adjust to, but certainly, if there's any other comments in that, I understand what you're saying, Counselor Peter Angelo, and we'll look for reductions. Now, I can tell you that the all-in blended rate on what would be, would be somewhere in the neighborhood of 3%. So even though the municipal levy would go, the impact on the average household would be about 5.8%. When you factor in waste and school in the region, it all comes in at 3%. So it's not out of line with what has happened in the past. It is, you know, it's a significant war in the municipal sector, but again, as you know, property taxes are a blend of the three levels of government. So certainly, we'll, we'll look to see what we can do in this regard and come back in a month's time with some potential solutions. We'll go from there.
Mr. Todd?
Mr. Chair, if I could just add one thing, just to add to what the Treasurer said, and we're at this point where we have an unfunded balance of $1.877 million. But if you go back a slide or two, Dean, that, to where the list of cuts were, we really have to get council, I think, to buy into that list. That list is about, this list here is about $1.2 million. And I think what we're hoping tonight, at least to say, you're accepting these cuts, because even if you take this $1.2 million in cuts, we're still $1.8 million plus away from getting to where it sounds like we need to have this budget go. So I think tonight, we'd at least like to get council to confirm or talk about this list. If there's anything you don't want on this list, or think we should remove or reduce, I think we should talk about it. But we would take the, I guess, the direction that if we're moving on from tonight and you're happy with this list, we would be eliminating this from the draft budget by the tune of about $1.2 million before we come back to the next meeting.
Okay. Counselor Morocco?
I'm sorry, Mr. Todd, I don't feel that I can make that motion or support that at this time. We still have a lot, still a lot to see. Well, there's still quite a bit that I would like to see on the budget. I don't think that we've seen all the other places that we can actually make our cuts. It's not fair that, first of all, we're going to start cutting with our own services that we need to provide. And it really just ticks me to no end to think that we're not looking at other places when we just heard about how we have to cut. We've got a huge shortfall, and we've got a fiscal responsibility that we have to cut, and it should be across the board in other areas. I can't look at cutting areas that we need to look at where we're our key provider of services to the city. So I'm sorry, I can't support that right now, just, sorry.
Any other comments? Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, you have to start somewhere.
You have to start somewhere.
And if you look at those things, the city float, you know, Santa Claus parade, many of the things on there, the only one that bothers me is the library reduction, which is substantial, but I think this is a good start on what we're talking about. And if we're talking about an overall increase in the final analysis of 3%, I'm sure that we're going to be able to come to some agreement on some other reductions. But I think the staff should be commended for the areas that they've searched for, and as Mr. Harrison says, they're going to continue. And I think that's, that's a good start, and we have to start somewhere. So I would move that we approve those recommended reductions at this time.
Sorry, secondary, and seconded by Counselor Carrion. Any questions or comments to the motion? The motion is to accept the recommended budget reductions that were outlined in the presentation. There's no questions or comments, so I'm sorry, Counselor Carrion?
Just wanted to make a comment with my seconding of the motion, Mr. Chairman, that I agree also with Counselor Morocco, that I want to see more. I don't want to just see our things, and I'm afraid we're going to have to roll up our sleeves and look at other things as well. So I agree with Counselor Thompson. This is a good start, and I'm glad to second, the staff's done a lot of work on this, so it's a good place to start, but I think that it's far from over.
Okay, if there's no other comments, then I'll call the motion. All those in favor? Opposed? One opposed. Motion's carried. Next presentation, I believe, is the user groups?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. At the last council meeting, we, we had brought forward a report on the grants and some reductions that we had requested, that we had included. And we were asked to come back with a clarification for our fee for service groups, and certainly, this is an opportunity to go through this list and seek any opportunities for reductions or increases or anything that you'd like to do. Going back, one thing that's important with this is that the process changed, and again, we, we've gone at this the last three years, I believe. Originally, we put all the groups in grants column, and we started to scale back on the, and then we, we developed a fee for service for those groups that don't really, they're not really municipal grants, and, and then we've expanded that. And one thing I'd like to make sure and that we're clear on is that the categorization between fee for service and grants is something that's been confirmed by council every year. So this is something that is a challenge. So again, when we go to the next slide, we can see that there's a distinction. And again, I, I want to make this distinction for, for everybody is that the distinction isn't whether the groups are doing a good job or performing good, good job in the work. The distinction is whether the city payment is to support a city responsibility. And I think staff, supports, looking at this again, to ensure that we are doing, we are spending money in the areas that are truly our responsibility. The January 22 meeting, council requested clarification on this. And so, again, we'll keep moving along. Unfortunately, I can't read next slide. Okay, so if we can go through every single group that this, and I think this is what council was asking for, but if it's not, we can go back again. Animal Control Services, which is Niagara Falls Meeting Society, done by the Clerks' Department. The amount requested was $452,000. It's actually what we're recommending is the amount. This is, in most cases, as I said, the amount requested and the amount recommended is the same. It's actually what we're recommending. Is it legislated? Actually, Humane Society, the work that's done is legislated, and it is a requirement of Municipal Act, and we do have a contract. And so you can see the description of the services. The Niagara District Airport Commission, that's in my, my department. Is this legislated? Well, it's not technically legislated, but it's included as a contract. We are in a contract with the City of St. Catherine's and the Town of Niagara Lake, and we have a binding contract to operate and fund the airport. Is it a requirement of Municipal? No. Niagara Falls Illumination Board, again, everything, everything that doesn't cleanly sits in another department falls into finance, so. Anyways, not that, anyways, Niagara Falls Illumination Board looks after, among other things, the lighting on the, on the falls. And we give an amount. That amount is established annually. Basically, it's with the other partners. The other partners are NPEI, the City of Niagara Falls, New York, the Parks Commission, and the American Parks Commission. And there's partnership in...
Hydro.
In hydro, right. And all of these groups contribute to this event, and again, you know, annually. Is it, is it a requirement of Municipal? No. But it is an agreement between all the parties that they share equally in the cost. Is there a contract? I'm not aware that there's a contract that's an agreement. There may be a contract that goes way back, but I've got no down there. The Boys and Girls Club, this is in the Recreation and Culture. And the amount requested and recommended is $192,000. Is this legislated? No. Is it a requirement of the Municipal Act? No. We have a contract. Not right now, we are working towards that. We do buy services like that. The Recreation and Culture Department of the City of Niagara Falls does not get into recreational programming. The Boys and Girls Club provide that in certain areas for us. They deliver year-round learn-to-sprint lessons, athletic leadership courses, youth recreation and sports. That's what we buy. That is the fee, that is the service that we buy from the Boys and Girls Club. And the recommendation, the Director of Recreation and Culture has met with the group, and that's the amount that was established. The Niagara Falls Concert Band, again, that's in Recreation, small amount, $3,600. Is it legislated? No. Is it a requirement of Municipal? No. Is there a contract? Again, we're working towards that. And they perform at city special events like Canada Day, Arts and Culture, Wall of Fame, various events, and that's what the fee is. Niagara Falls Art Gallery, again, Recreation and Culture. Again, this is one of the ones originally was in the grant area, was moved into fee for service, $27,000. Again, it's not legislated, not a requirement of Municipal, and there's not a contract. And they deliver preschool, youth and adult art classes. So that's what we're buying. The city does not provide that, and we buy that service, they provide it on our behalf. Stanford Volunteer Firefighters Association, Fireman's Park, we have, the amount is 14,400. We have entered into a contract. Is that legislated? No. Is there a requirement of Municipal? No. And that's for the park maintenance. We basically buy that opportunity from them to, they perform those services for us and give us access to that park more than anything. So we do have a contract. Chippewa Lions Park, again, in the Parks area, $33,000. They did request more this year, and again, we, we're recommending the same amount as we have in the past. Again, we do have a contract with them. Is it legislated? No. Is it a requirement of Municipal? No. But it is something that they do on our behalf. We have done preliminary estimates for us to do it internally. This has been a long-term relationship, and they perform the park maintenance on our behalf, and we, we provide an amount to... Moving to the next chart, Niagara Falls Tourism. This is in Business and Economic Development. The amount requested is $360,000. Is this legislated? No. Is it a requirement of Municipal? No. Do we have a contract? No, but we're working on that. And they provide leadership and coordination in promoting and marketing Niagara Falls tourism. Again, there's been lots of discussion whether, being that Niagara Falls is such a significant, relies on such a significant portion of our tourism industry, is a large part of our assessment base, this support is, allows, and again, I can let the director speak more fluently about this, but this is something that we believe that we're buying, that if we didn't do that, then we would, we would have to have internal resources to provide that service. Winter Festival of Lights, again, Business Development, $342,000. Now, one thing that should be highlighted is $100,000 of that is paying off a loan that we have with, that the Winter Festival of Lights has. So they, they actually are getting $242,000 of that to, to operate. And again, it's not legislated, it's not a requirement of Municipal, and there's no contract. And again, similar to Niagara Falls Tourism, it provides the largest winter festival lights in Canada, and again, it's something that promotes our tourism business in the, in the off, or shoulder part of the year. Project Share, again, it's in Finance, $298,000. It's not legislated, it's not a requirement of Municipal Act, and it's not, it's not a contract. Again, it provides food, emergency food to put people in Niagara Falls with basic living needs. And certainly, it's, it, there's a long history of how this developed with emergency food, and certainly, this is the amount that we have funded in the past. Woman's Place of South Niagara, again, it falls into Finance, $19,000, $350. It provides safe shelter, counseling and education to women and children, victims of domestic violence and abuse. And again, it's not legislated, not a requirement of Municipal, no contract. And then finally, on the last chart, we can see the YWCA, again, Finance, $51,000. It's legislated? No. Requirement of Municipal? No. Contract? No. But it does provide emergency help for families that are homeless and at risk of homelessness. Each of the last three are social services that, again, are continuing to find increasing need in the community and are, have larger numbers than they have in the past. St. John Ambulance, Water Patrol, Fire Department 329, legislated? No. Requirement of Municipal? No. Contract? No. And again, it provides Water Patrol during the summer months of June to September. And again, it provides water patrol during the summer months of June to September that assists in providing education to bowlers and swimmers, local hazards, and provides first aid for injuries on the water and on the adjacent land. Now, Caravan Transportation, this is a significant increase from previous year, but is it legislated? Yes. We do have a legislative responsibility to provide access to those individuals that are disabled, and so we do have that responsibility. Is it a requirement of Municipal? No. And is there a contract? We're working on that, and as the Director of Transportation indicated, we will be reviewing this operation this current year. The increase is so significant, if you recall, it's because of the relocation of the dialysis unit into Niagara Falls from a neighboring municipality. And the Caravan is responsible for transporting individuals to that. And again, we don't have exact numbers on what the number of people that'll be using that service. We have forecasted, and that's our best reflection of what the information we have. That's a public service providing transportation members to unable to use conventional transit. GNGH Foundation, finance, $50,000. Is it legislated? It's legislated with a little asterisk. And what that means is, the way hospitals work in the province is, the province looks after funding hospitals, except for the hospital in St. Catharines, which is also going to have a contribution off the tax base for St. Catharines and Thoral, but that seems to be a new nuance. And we are required, as a local community, to provide funding, because there is no funding for equipment. Now, it doesn't say the municipality has to fund it, but in most municipalities, the municipality does contribute in some way to the capital campaigns that their local foundation has entrusted to raise money in the community. So that's, it's an asterisk beside the legislation. Is it a requirement of Municipal? No. Is it a contract? No. And they are embarking on, this is a commitment that council has made in previous years, they are embarking on a new piece of machinery, which escapes me at the moment, but yes, I thought that was it. Cascan machinery, and that's a long-term commitment towards the funding of that cascan machinery. So again, all in total, this comes up to $2.6 million. The next chart shows the grants. And again, I think it's important to realize that the permissive grants has a process. Every year, we have an application that the groups have to fill in. And obviously, these groups have gone through previous budgets. A number of these are long-term agencies. The only new one is the Community Artists of Niagara. But the other four groups have, in the past, received permissive grants. There has been discussion at council whether they are fee-for-service. They've never been included. So we treat them as permissive grant. And in talking, you know, in discussions with the CAO and what we've done in previous years, we believe that income support to grant organizations, again, the distinction going back is, not that they're not doing valued work in the community, it's just not a municipal responsibility. Again, we see the legislated, none of the groups are legislated to, as a requirement. The amount requested, the amount approved, the amount recommended is a reduction, and what we basically have recommended is a one-third reduction. And the grants are, the descriptions are there. Stanford Lions, they're required to help finish payments on the water heater, continue to wash muck rays, assist other hall renovations. Niagara Falls Badminton Club, ongoing repairs and maintenance. Niagara Falls Bowling Club, club operations, rent, maintenance, and loan care. Niagara Art District Council, Niagara District Art Association is a rent subsidy. And Community Artists of Niagara asked for $30,000. You recall, they came to council earlier, late in last year, and made a presentation. And what they had requested was some money to create a website, and also some additional money to fund a feasibility study. And so it didn't meet the recommendations of our criteria. So again, we've walked through both groups, and certainly, all the Directors are here, and we take any direction that council has in this regard.
Mr. Harrison, could you just tell me, what did we just cut from our operations?
We cut a variety, from across the board. We cut $1.2 million out, including the $5,900 in grants. That was included in there.
So I'm just going to touch on the grants. You actually reduced the grants already by, did you say one-third?
Yeah.
So yet, you never touched the fees for services, and yet, you've already pointed out that probably more than two-thirds are not even a requirement of us to provide a service to, or even provide a fee. Why have you not, as staff, looked at fees for service for a reduction? And maybe just before you answer that, if we were to reduce $1 million from that $2.6 million, what would it be as a savings on the taxes, a relief on taxes?
How much?
If we were to take, reduce $1 million from that, what would, a savings on tax, on a tax portion?
I'll try to answer, there's a number of questions in there. First of all.
Oh, I'll remember.
Okay. The fee-for-service, the direction that we received is that every Director was to go back and to review the expenditure level with the group. Because in essence, a fee-for-service means that we're buying a service. Every single one of the Directors has gone back and done that. They have not included any reductions, simply because the, in the Director's viewpoint, those areas are required to get the money, that they require that money to operate. That's the direction. Now.
Well, I'm just going to stop you right there. That's a good point, but we, as elected officials, actually oversee the taxpayers' dollars also. So it's not really the obligation of staff to come back and tell us where we should be actually allocating our dollars. And I don't want to get too much, but I appreciate that, and that's all under their departments. So as you're saying that you're coming back to, for them to lobby, we also have to make sure that we're here lobbying and making sure that our taxpayers' dollars are being well-spent to the best. And we don't want to raise that either, because we've got a $2.6 million that we're giving out. And I have to go back to my little spiel about, if it was your own house, you go and borrow money to give to charity. And I'm not saying that any of these organizations are not worthy of the money. Believe me, they are. I truly believe that. But we have to make cuts. And if we can cut 1.2 out of areas, that is our responsibility as a tax, as a council, to the city of Niagara Falls and a tax base, that our fees for services and grants, as we actually outlined, are not one of the requirements, such as the infrastructure that we need to provide with taxpayers' dollars. I'm not trying to attack, I'm just trying to say, I just don't see the logic. Why we actually didn't look at the fees for service when it's 2.6, we're actually going to have to borrow money to give away money, which just isn't fair. It doesn't seem right. But yet, we're going to take away from the roads and all the services that we are supposed to be providing to actually give to charities and other organizations that actually have an opportunity to get money elsewhere. And maybe, quite possibly, as I know, are double and triple dipping in other areas for
We have started the budget process back in November. We made presentations throughout that, which included discussion at all of the points about the fee-for-service. I mean, we did mention it in each of the departments that I directed it. We, you know, at the end, the last meeting, we did receive a direction. The direction wasn't to cut, the direction was to provide this information.
Well, Mr. Harrison, just to that point too, that might be very true, but in the last meeting, we actually were just told by a special meeting that we just had last week, we are now in a shortfall of $2.8 million because we don't have the assessment from the casino. I think we have to take a hard look at where we're going to cut. And I have to say, there's no forgiveness anywhere. Fees for service isn't special to anybody. I mean, it's just, look at, it says it's not a city requirement, and we're not going to cut? I'm sorry, I can't buy that.
Perhaps I can help shed a little light on this, is that over the last several years, many of these that are on this fee-for-service list used to be grants. And for the last two or three years, this staff has been before you saying, we think we should get out of the grant business. And what's happened is, every one of those grants has gravitated over to a fee-for-service, which means you, as a council, have told us that this is a service that's important to you as a community. We then have gone back and met with the groups and said, all right, if this is a service that council feels is important to the community, what funding level do we want to have? So what we've done, and many of these groups actually were looking for more funding this year. And our staff met and said, no, you're not getting any more than you got last year, so you have to reduce what your ask is. And that's the numbers before you. If you truly want, if you, if you, as a council, feel that these truly aren't fees for service, they shouldn't be on this list to begin with. They should be over in the grants list, and then we would have been requesting again.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, I'm sorry. Something's happening on these windows. I think these people should move away from me. Can you hear that something?
Snowballs.
Huh?
Snowballs.
The window's unbreakable.
I don't know.
I'm suggesting we be that way. Here, for point of safety. I don't know about seeing the windows, but I'm afraid they're not a good fall.
I think it's snowballs.
Yeah, it's probably snowballs. If I hear a crash, I'll move.
So just to finish, Mr. Chair. So back to my final point, is that if we truly don't believe these are fee-for-services, then they should go back on the grants list. And again, staff would be suggesting we should be getting out of the grants business, and as we suggested with the other grants lists this year, we're recommending, and council's already approved, a one-third reduction. So that's the process, we've kind of come full circle, and I can appreciate your comments, Counselor, but we've had these here, and the reasons why they're back is just to identify to you what is legislated and required, and you can see many of them aren't. But this council as a whole has decided that these are things that are important to this community, and that's why they're on this list.
And to that point, to that point.
There's no doubt, Mr. Chair, that I cannot believe that they are not worthy of the money. It's just that we are in this financial state of, we have to look at, I don't care whether we want to call it a grant or a fee for service, if it's road maintenance, whether it's water or sewer, we're cutting everywhere. I'm not going to put it in the little, in the little section of the binder, because it says fee for service, whoa, we don't touch it. It has to have some kind of cuts. I'm not sure, and I don't want to be the one hanging up here saying, you know what, I think this one and that one should take a cut. I think we have to look at it and say, we need to take $1 million on that as well. Where it comes from, that's the variable.
Counselor Mays?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I think we've beaten this one, for the last six years I've been on council, we've beaten this one over the head. And I think a lot of these groups too, I think a lot of these should be probably regional responsibilities, or as well provincial responsibilities. Until such time as they can find alternative funding, I think it's our responsibility. I think these are, these are services that we've, as I say, for the last number of years, we've beaten them to death, and I can't see where any of these, and I'm on a couple of the boards that are involved here, and I can't see where we can cut any of these. I think, even when you look at the tourism bureau, they employ 26,000 residents in Niagara Falls, and I don't see how, if we can't afford to give them some money to promote our city, there's something wrong with our tax system or something here. These are, what I feel are our services, as I say, for six years, we debated these, they really haven't gone up to any great degree, other than, I would say, probably the transit, which is for the new dialysis system. That's unavoidable. So I see no reason why, we just have to keep these in. That's the way I feel about it.
Any other comments from any member of council? Counselor Gates?
Counselor Pierre Angel, the Chair. I've only been in council, this is, I think, my third budget, and I can't agree more with Counselor Mays. This all comes down to what type of community you want, quite frankly. You know, the Boys and Girls Club, you want to cut money to the Boys and Girls Club. We want to cut money to Project Share. Well, sometimes I get emotional when I talk about Project Share, because the need in this community, in Niagara Falls, the Niagara region, is more today than at any time I think that I can remember in my history. What's going on in our communities is incredible. And I saw a young lady on Saturday at Knopf Hills, and she had a sign on her front of her, "I'm pregnant and homeless." Is that what we want to have in our community? We've got an obligation. I think the provincial government has an obligation. I think the region has an obligation. But unfortunately, they're not coming to the table. This is our community. We're the city councils that make decisions. And what type of community do I want to live in? Do I want to live in one where I have people going down in the tourist sector, like they have in other communities, begging for money? Do we want that to happen, so the tourists don't come to Niagara Falls because of that? I take a look at the, and I'll use Project Share, Women's Place of South Niagara. Think about what's going on in our communities today. And it's the same amount of money, but I can tell you, the need is more. And Project Share had to lay some people off, because we got them hired at Spencer ARL, one of the new manufacturing places. They left Project Share, and we were lucky enough to get them hired in a new workplace and thing. You take a look at the YWCA, our hospital, the foundation, and what's going on in our healthcare system. You want to take money from that? I'm really a, you know, as long as I'm on council, I can't support reducing these things. I have no problem lobbying the government to say, you know, it's your responsibility. But if they're not coming to the plate, I think this council has an obligation to make sure this community is the best it can be for everybody that lives in it. So I can't support cutting those.
Any other counsel, have any other comments? Counselor Morocco?
Well, I just want to make it noted that we need to cut, and I'm going to stick with my thing. I mean, we all talk about we're in for fees for service, and I don't know why we're in some of them, because some of them, actually, there is duplication of services. Some of them are already getting provincial money to the tone of $4 million, and I don't know why some of them aren't merged with other organizations to take advantage of that. There's other services that are getting, and I have to say, I know there's a great need to feed and shelter the mother and children of the city, there's no doubt. But my greatest fear right now is that I do not want to raise taxes and create more clients for Project Share, or any of the other women shelters that are out there. And I think that's what we have to take a hard look at right now. If we're going to raise the taxes, we're actually forcing some of these people that are just trying to survive, barely surviving, and I'm telling you, I've taken those calls, I've heard those people, and I see them every day. They're looking for jobs, they can't find a job, because let's face it, where's the industry in Niagara Falls? It's just not here. We've got the tourism sector, and it's down. So the more that we want to raise taxes to provide some of these fees for services that we really have to take a hard look at, that maybe there should be other. When are we going to get off our seat and say, okay, the region, go ahead. What did the region do to Project Share last year? It was disgusting. They basically cut them off at the knees, gave them no funding at all, and said, go find it yourself. Left us with the responsibility of totally funding them. Is that right? No, it's not. And I have to tell you, they need to get provincial help, but when are we going to do it? We said it last year. We said that we have to start cutting out and getting the province to step up to the plate, or the region. We're still taking the full burden, and what are we now calling it? Fees for service. We've got to stop, because we're only going to create more of the clients for Project Share if we don't hold our tax base.
Counselor Thompson?
Well, I'm very pleased to hear the comments of Counselor Mays and Gates, because I felt I was always the one jumping up and trying to make those statements about what's going on in the community. Exactly my feelings that I've heard from the other side of the table. First of all, the grants that you see there have been consistent for probably six or seven years, there hasn't been any increases. I hear Counselor Morocco indicate one organization has $4 million. He's probably talking about the Regional Tourist Organization, which is a central group that was set up by the province, is only funded till '14, and then the whole situation may change. There's already the government, one of the opposition leaders, saying as soon as he gets in, the RTO is gone. in, the RTO is gone. We have an opportunity here to have an organization carry out the marketing arm for the city of Niagara Falls that creates, I think it's more than 26,000 jobs. And as a matter of fact, tourism this year has not gone down in 2012. It has gone up, I believe it's around 6%, 3%, 6%, but it actually has increased because of the organizations that are working throughout the region, but particularly Niagara Falls Tourism and the DMO in Niagara on the Lake, who are very effective in what they do. And are we unique? Every municipality that is a destination for tourism supports that organization, and we are at really the low end of the scale as a partner in tourism with the funding that you see here. But what you have to do is just go through the list. First of all, are you going to cut animal control? We have a legal obligation to do that. Do I like that figure, 452,000? Hasn't changed for several years, but we have an obligation to do that. The Niagara District Airport, hopefully we're going to get, with the study that's going on right now, the region to take over that responsibility. I'm not suggesting that we should not participate to that amount, but if everybody in the region participated, that's going to create jobs and economy, and it's going to be a great opportunity for us in the future. And this is the first time I've seen a glimmer of hope where that may possibly happen. The Illumination Board, I go back to when the mayor of Niagara Falls, New York, was going to pull out of the illumination of the falls. It went worldwide. He called me and said, "Come over and pick up this check quick before the council deals with it." So are we going to do that? I don't really think so. The concert band, what are we going to do, Remembrance Day, Canada Day? We pay these people for a fee for service. Do we want to have music on those days? I would think so. Stanford Center Volunteer Firemen, what a great job. Chippewa Lions, flip the slide.
You need to do them all?
Absolutely, because if we're going to talk about it, make a recommendation.
But I think the majority, yeah, but I think the majority of us agree, you know? And I think the majority of us around the table are like-minded in that sense.
So you cut me out for that. Project Share.
Did you want to make a motion?
You know, you know something? We're dealing with the budget. I know that we're going to come in with something that's very reasonable and fair in the final analysis. I don't agree with the hysteria that I'm hearing with respect to the debt we're in. Yes, we've had a huge hit by the casino, but I think we're going to manage that, and I'm going to be part of supporting the management of that. And the, if I'm going to go down in history, I don't want to be down in history as being the one who cut $50,000 from Project Share, or from Women's Place, or putting our problems on the backs of women and children. That's not my philosophy. And make a motion to cut a particular item, and we'll deal with it as a council. Otherwise, I think we've been through this enough, that let's get on with dealing with the rest of it.
Okay, I'll take a motion, and I think it should be just simply move to final budget recommendations that are here. Motion by Counselor Mays, seconded by Counselor Gates. Do we have any questions or comments at all to the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call the motion. All those in favor? Both motions carried, one opposed. Next presentation is, I believe, going to deal with the capital budget, and Mr. Harrison, you're up again.
Usually, again, tonight, all we're really doing tonight on the capital budget is introducing it. You have your binders that have been put on your desks to peruse. Again, we can't pass the capital budget, we're not looking for approval tonight until we confirm the amounts transferred out of the utility budgets and out of the operating budget. And again, as we discussed already, we have some work to do to get to that. So, again, when we're looking at the capital budget, the very first step in the capital budget was back in January, when we provided a report, 2013-02, which outlined what the status of all our capital projects at that point. We also, as I said, the binders are on your desk. Each of the directors were asked to go back and develop a prioritization for their projects, both departmentally, that's taking into account their 10-year capital needs, putting forth what we call Priority One projects. And then corporately, we had to evaluate each of these projects with the amount of money, and it's based on affordability. Again, just for a point of clarification, the only way that we can borrow money as a municipality is for capital infrastructure. We don't borrow money for operating results. We are not like the federal or provincial government. We can only, we can only borrow for capital projects. Going forward, in your booklet, you can see that the proposed capital expenditures for this year are approximately $32 million. You can see that the, that we're proposing to spend a million dollars in the fire area in municipal works, which has a variety, that's water, sewer, and all the roads, but also has fleet. We're proposing to spend $27 million transportation. A little bit light, but you can remember that the BTS project is still going on, and that's in that area. Recreation and culture, 227. Building Department, 16, 1.6 million. The library, 157,000. Info Systems, 251. Small Business Office, 50. And the Cemeteries and Park, 1.1 million. All the details of all those projects are listed in your binder. So moving to the next slide, we can quickly see the next slide. In your budget binders is an insert, which is basically the entire capital budget on a summary form. This is in your green binder, so when you're taking a look at it, preparing for the approval of it, you can go through this. This basically shows the amount of money that we have available, and, yeah, I've never had people wanting to come into the budget presentations before. I don't know if that's a new thing. I'm getting good at this, or?
I think that's what it is, you're getting good at it.
Is that what it is? Okay.
They're actually screaming, "Todd, Todd, Todd."
Is that what it is? I can't hear that well. I'm getting older. I can't see. I didn't catch that, but that's our...
It's not for five minutes, you'll have all asleep.
Perhaps we should invite them in. Anyways, this chart really runs through all of it, and we've got a limited amount of time. I know we want to get the council back on at, started at 7:00, but basically, every single project is listed here. Some of the projects that we have to go out and borrow, that we weren't completed at year-end, that we have to go forward with, are listed. We have some projects that are fully funded, and by department, you can see all the projects that are fully funded, meaning that these projects perhaps have reserve funds, or maybe special grants, or whatnot, and each of those, and each of the sheets will show you that. So then when we get into the heart of the matter, we can see all the Priority One projects listed, where the funding is coming from, what are the main areas, and it goes through by department. You know, just to highlight a few, a few projects. The asphalt overlay project, again, we're spending a million dollars in that area. Again, it's a little bit less than what we had projected in our capital, 10-year capital needs, but again, the unfortunate thing with a capital project, budget like this, is we have a variety of needs that we have to meet, and this is one area, but we are intending to spend a million dollars. We have a number of water and sewer rehabilitation programs. We have fleet purchase. You know, again, our fleet, we have a significant investment in our moving fleet, trucks that utilize for snow plowing, that our staff use to provide services, a variety of items, fire trucks. It's all congregated in one area, that's in Mr. Holman's area, and the original request is about $3 million. What we can afford to fund this year is a million dollars. So again, there's going to be, have to be some difficult decisions that are made in that area. We look down the road, we have federal gas tax that we can fund. The Lemon Road Bridge replacement, and the Miller Road Bridge replacement are two projects that we've tagged as, we've tagged as replacements, and those have been tagged as being funded from gas tax. New sidewalk construction, again, this is a critical area, and as well as sidewalk replacement program are both funded. The city's municipals, our responsibility to battlefield, historic site planning and development, that's carp restoration. And that's related to... Are we on the right slide? No, we're not on the right slide. There's no slide for this. This is, as I was saying, this is the chart here. That's actually, should have been edited out of the presentation, it's at the back of the... We can see in fire, one of the items that we have is a replacement pumper is funded. And then going through here, one of the big, a big item is the HVAC system in City Hall is included, it's being replaced this year. We had a study, if you recall, that was provided to council in the middle of last year, that identified about $1.6 million needed to be worked on. Now, there's certainly significant incentives from the federal government and the Green Fund, and we think that is a good investment. We have some investments in the, at the Gale Center. The library has provided some works. We have some commitments that we have to commit funds for, with the Thorold Stone Road, which is the road realignment going into the Gale Center, Catal Drive. These are both regional projects that we've had to commit to. So this, when you're looking at your capital budget, if you look at your chart one, that will provide you with the details on top of what's in your budget book. One of the things that I know you, Councilor Peter Angelo, are always interested, as all the council, this is municipal debt update, of how much debt we are taking on. As we indicated in our discussions of the operating budget, we did not issue debt in 2012, even though we had approval of 5.9. The reason that we didn't issue any debt is that none of the debt projects that we had anticipated borrowing for were completed. We don't, we, as we indicated, the policy of the department is to ensure that the project costs are fully known at the time, and we would borrow at that time. We will be going to market for the 5.9 million in 2013. We are going for an additional $1.2 million on the museum project. The reason for that is that even though the project was underspent, we have not received as much grant money as was initially anticipated at the very beginning of the project, and we also have a shortfall in our fundraising activity. And as a result, we need to go forward with borrowing. The project's complete, and we will be going forward and borrowing the balance of that. There'll be a report coming forward within the next council meetings. There's three projects that we anticipate going forward with, as I indicated, and all three of these projects, we don't anticipate that will be completed to the point where we need to know that we would be going forward with borrowing in the new year. We've provided a chart which indicates the amount of debt outstanding by each year. If you recall, we had a debt management strategy at that time that we talked about it. We had Option Two, which we went forward, which basically was a process of ensuring that as the debt retired, we replaced the debt, and we also reduced our transfer to capital, and used the debt room that that created and borrowed. Again, that was basically based on our need to reinvest in our municipal assets. Because we didn't borrow last year, we had a little bit of a drop-off in the outstanding debt, and we anticipate that we would, the borrowing plus the repayment would get us, as you can see on the chart, remaining slightly lower than what we had anticipated in Option Two. We're going to be providing more details on this as we consider the capital budget later, later in the spring. So basically, we're at the point where we're just introducing the budget, gave you a couple of highlights on some of the projects that are included, asking you to review the binder, and once we approve the operating and utility budgets, then we'd be in a position to go approve the capital budget and approve the debt financing. Any questions? Certainly open to take that right now.
Mr. Harrison, just looking at this slide here, the Kayla Road project, we did apply for funding from, I believe it was the federal government.
Yes.
That funding was turned down.
My understanding is it's denied. It was, we received a letter today. Mr. Holman may concur, and we are currently looking at that project, and we will be reviewing the budget sheet based on the funding needs. As you know, that project is a multi-phase project, and we had put it forth as the best investment for, and we're still working on what that's going to be, so there will be an amendment to the capital budget for that sheet going forward, reflecting the grant in IRL.
Okay. Any questions? Counselor Gates?
Yeah, thanks, Counselor Peter Angelo. I just got a question on this municipal debt update, on Kayla Road. It says that we're going to have to borrow to do the road. Is that how I'm reading that?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
And I guess my question is that with the amount of development that's gone there, how much of that is going to be paid by development charges? When you take a look at the amount of housing, because I think you're going from the rail line up, and the amount of housing, and I drive there every day because my daughter goes to St. Mike's, and I took a look at the road, and where the housing is going, it's really, it's really bad there. It's cracked, it's all that stuff, and that makes a lot of sense, because the big heavy trucks have been coming in there for a long period of time, and I would think that some of that cost should go to development charges. Maybe could answer that, or maybe it already is, but I just thought I'd ask a question.
If you, if you look at, if you look at page 28 in the binder, it shows that the development charges are included in the cost of that project as a funding source. Again, development charges, again, are, you have to look at what is eligible for development charges. I know that on projects, we try to maximize the amount of money that we use from development charges in all of this to mitigate any use of operating funds, whether it be from the utility budget or from the operating budget, as well as to minimize the amount of debt. So I'd have to look at that more intensely to know that, but there is development reserve funds that are being used.
Yeah, could you, oh, I'm sorry. It's okay. Could you just take a look at that, and I'll give you a call tomorrow? I took a look at it quickly, and if I got any further questions, I'll ask them.
Again, in light of, in light of the grant money being denied, we'll be reviewing that budget sheet, so certainly we'll be coming forward with an amendment. But I'll be here about 7:00 in the morning.
And I think the scope of the project, Counselor, as well, is not just to, is to reconstruct Beaver Dam to Lundey Plain, but it's all the way down to Westwood or Forestview Drive, depending on which way you turn. Counselor Mays?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I noticed in the budget book is the security cameras for the Gale Center. Do we have to wait to pass this budget? Are they going in now? Or can someone update me on that? I know it's been a hot topic in the newspaper.
Well, certainly they're on the list, but we would have to wait for final approval of capital budget before we went out and actually purchased those.
You have to wait for final approval of this?
Yes. Well, the only way we could...
Well, the only way we could advance it is that if we had a motion to pre-approve that item, and we could go ahead and do that.
Well, I'd like to make that motion because I think that's quite necessary for the safety of the people at the arena and whatnot.
There's a motion on the floor to approve the cameras going into the Gale Center or to approve the capital expenditure of them. Everyone understand the motion? I'll call the vote, are those in favor? Posed, motion's carried, thank you. I'm sorry. I'm sorry councillor? Okay.
Sorry, I wasn't quick enough to get my hand up, but I'd just like to know where the cameras are going to go. I think that's a fair question, so.
Sure.
Where are the cameras going to be located?
Well, what we're going to be doing is, we, as you know, it's been reported, we did have a security report that was done, but now that this is approved, we'll go out with an RFP and we'll finalize the exact locations of where they're going to be in keeping with what that security report says. So that's the next process we'll go through.
Okay, so the motion was approved. Councillor Markle?
Actually, it came up in a conversation. What other means can we take by, other than putting a camera? If we put a cameras in the halls of the Gale Center, are we looking at other facilities that we have, that we have to do this as well? I think we did kind of have a brief conversation about key passes and, you know, it's only certain people get them, and there's actually a code that they have. Is there, you know, a cost somewhere? I mean, are we looking at changing all the key systems and we still got to put the cameras up? So I just hate to be throwing out money when we don't really have it.
And actually, the recommendation for the cameras was a specific recommendation in the security report. And in HR this year, Trent, Mr. Dark, is going to be having his staff roll out a fuller implementation of a lot of the other recommendations in that safety report. And some of them involve other buildings, and some of the other buildings may have recommended certain other security features, and we're going to look at, see if there's other less expensive ways that we can do that, so that's what we're going to be working through.
Well, I have to say that I cannot support the motion at this point because I think I do, just indicated that we're going to actually look at other areas that might need to have security and there might be more dollars that need to be spent. And I think I'd just like to see the whole report on.
Yeah, just, just for my, but what we determined through this budget cycle is that this was our priority for this building to have it in, so the other ones we viewed as being a little bit less priority than this item.
Are there any other comments at all about the capital budget? This was just simply meant for an introduction. Grab some motion then just to receive the capital budget and then we'll close the budget meeting. Motion by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Maves. Any questions to the motion? Councillor Wing?
I see I have conflicts on parts of it, so I'll not vote on this.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor? Posed, motion's carried, and I believe that the budget presentation is done and we'll pass it back to the mayor for the regular council meeting. Take five minutes? In five minutes, we'll start with the regular council meeting.
I think they're happy. They must have been happy at the motion that came on the floor.
Okay.
You will hear a little bit of noise in the background, we've got some people, some protesters out front of City Hall making some noise. So if you do hear some noise or you do see some lights, it's simply that. Moving along as well, we'd like to draw attention to the Valentine's decorations. Valentine's two days away, so make sure you do something special for that special person. I haven't had my tie today, I've got my Valentine's tie. You like that one councillor?
It's my tie.
My tie, my tie, it's my tie. So moving along, on to the presentations and deputations of tonight's council meeting. Next up is the stair climb for children's cancer. And to address council tonight, we've got Angela Davey and Laurie Taraba here to speak. And fill us in on what's going on.
Thank you Mayor Deodaddy.
Welcome.
Good evening, and we are here to ask for your assistance in two upcoming Canadian Cancer Society events.
My name's Angela Daly and I'm the Niagara unit manager of the Canadian Cancer Society, our local office. We'd like to ask for council support to declare April as Cancer Awareness Month. Since the Canadian Cancer Society is celebrating its 75th anniversary in 2013, we are stepping up our goal of bringing support, advocacy, and awareness to residents about a disease that continues to take far too many of our loved ones. By giving us your declaration, you are saying that you will help us to fight back so that no Canadian will ever fear cancer in their lifetime. We are also asking for your support for our daffodil pin campaign by wearing one this April.
And I'm Laurie Taraba, and I'm here to ask for council support for our newest event for 2013, the Canadian Cancer Society's Stair Climb for Children's Cancer, taking place Saturday, April the 13th, 2013, from 8:30 a.m. until 12:30 p.m. at the Skyline Tower here in Niagara Falls. After years' absence, the event is back and it's bigger and better than ever. While the idea is still the same, a $20 registration fee gives you a chance to climb the 660 steps to the top of the tower and a t-shirt, our funds will now focus on our pediatric transportation program at the Niagara unit and for childhood cancer research. I'm a parent of a childhood cancer survivor, and we have benefited from this program available to caregivers who drive their children back and forth to cancer treatments in both Hamilton and Toronto, since pediatric oncology services are not available here in the region. So, to help offset those costs associated with the available here in the region. So, to help offset those costs associated with the travel, the Niagara Unit provides a transportation subsidy to parents, so they can concentrate on what matters most, which is helping to get their child to get better. But however, this program is very costly for the unit to run.
Which is why we have brought back our Stair Climb event. So what's new this year? The Olympic Climb Buddy Program. We have confirmed over 12 Olympic heroes and hopefuls, including Tanya Verbeek, Mike Strange, and Martha McCabe, who will be paired with a child and will then climb on their behalf. An eligible child is one who is either undergoing cancer treatment, or has finished in the last four years. Athletes will also challenge each other to the top to win prizes for their child, with the winning athlete standing on top of the podium at our medal ceremony to follow.
In addition, anyone can join the Climb Buddy Program. By going online and registering, you can raise money and climb on behalf of a child that you may know who is currently battling cancer, with lots of fundraising levels and incentives available. Last, we are hosting an after-climb activity center. Clowns, silent auctions, vendors, entertainment, and arts and crafts for the whole family, including a celebration and cake for our 75th anniversary, with our provincial representatives there as well. So, we think that Stair Climb is back, and there's so much more to offer for this year's event. As well, Angela and I are challenging Mayor DiOdatti and our city councillors to enter a team into this event, or to challenge each other for a race to the top.
So are you up for it? If you are, there's information in registration forms, which they can be found at our website at cancer.ca/stairclimponiagara. Or you can follow us on Facebook and Twitter. If you're not able to make our event, we do ask that you Twitter or Facebook about it, like Olympian Brian Price, George Strombelopolis, and our own Prime Minister Stephen Harper will be doing so on event day. We thank you for the opportunity to come and speak to you tonight, and we look forward to your support.
Thank you very much, ladies. We've got councillor Morocco would like to come.
Yes, I'd like to say thank you very much for the job you do. And Laurie, I know that you very well that you had a child that suffered through cancer and the treatment for a number of years. And I have to say, it's a pleasure to see him on our cameras, Kojiko cameras, every once in a while here. So, God bless you that things worked out all the best, and through that is through the funding. So I'd like to actually make a motion to support April as Cancer Awareness, and also support their event as well.
Okay, we've got a motion by councillor Morocco that we declare the month of April as Cancer Awareness Month, seconded by councillor Peter Angelo. Is there any other discussion to the motion? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? It's unanimous, as we would expect. Also, did you have further comment, councillor?
No.
Okay. Now, typically, our resident athletic council member is councillor Peter Angelo, and we typically get him to represent us in any kind of athletic endeavor. And I'm hoping that he will consider the stair climb to represent our council. Yes, councillor?
I'll gladly challenge your worship.
Yeah. Only if you do it backwards, then I have a chance.
You're on.
Anyway, it's getting really hot in here. We'll discuss it further. How's that? I was discussing with the ladies. I do have, we do have another event in town that I'm committed to, but I'd like to be able to come over and definitely participate and be a part of it, and cheer on councillor Peter Angelo as he races. But we'll see how that one works out. So, we do have unanimous, so the month of, the month of April will be Cancer Awareness Month. And as well, if you can get the information to us, we will tweet it, and we'll Facebook it as well, and we'll make sure we reach out through our social media, and we'll hit thousands of people as well.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along to our planning matters. Mr. Clerk, can you please introduce the next item on the agenda?
Your worship, a public meeting is now being convened for a, it's basically a housekeeping amendment to the city zoning bylaw related to the definition for places of entertainment. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act to various authorities, and there was a, there was a, an advert out in the Niagara Falls Review on Monday, December 24th. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Bolebrook, will you please explain the purpose and reason for the proposed bylaw amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This amendment will basically do two things. Firstly, it's going to expand the definition of places of entertainment. Right now, we have a limited number of uses, so we'll do that. And also, it will exempt certain uses from the height regulations. Background, the current definition of places of entertainment is an arena, auditorium, public hall, bowling alley, ice roller, or roller rink, curling rink, dance hall, music hall, theater, cinema, and other places where pictures are projected. So you can see, there's a limited number of types of uses, and we'd like to offer that we expand that. Currently, the, the definition does not allow more than three, or three or more pinball, or electronic game machines. And it also doesn't allow things like carnival show, circus, merry-go-round, miniature, or switch amusement ride or device, and also a billiard or a pool room. The history has been that whenever we have an application for something that doesn't fit the definition, we've had to go through a zoning bylaw amendment. So, this process will certainly quicken that. And also, for the height exemption for the tents and the mechanical amusement rides, again, if anything was above the current provision of 12 meters or 40 feet, we'd have to do a zoning bylaw amendment. As far as the planning analysis, the official plan, it does allow places of entertainment in a number of our commercial designations, such as the city's tourist commercial, major commercial, and minor commercial. We would say that this amendment certainly conforms with the official plan. As far as the zoning amendment, we went through, or just presented, the definition needs to be expanded, and also the height limitation needs to be exempted for certain uses. So, in conclusion, the intent of the amendment is certainly to make it more contemporary, include a number of new uses. And what that will do is a number of things. It will provide businesses with the opportunity to establish new attractions, it supports city tourism activities, it does allow the expansion of uses in the places of entertainment definition. We are going to see, obviously, the addition of pinball, electronic games establishment, and billiard and pool rooms that are considered a typical form of entertainment today. And also, the tents and the mechanical amusement rides increase in their, their height. We will also, as part of that, will require building permits, so there will be an element of control still provided through the Building Code Act. So in recommendation, the council approved the amendment tonight. It also is further along in the agenda. And we believe that it'll be a wise, certainly, an opportunity to allow a lot of the uses that we would have to process through a zoning bylaw amendment. That Mr. Mayor's conclusion of my presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bolebrook. Are there any questions of council? Okay, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheet will result in staff rejecting an appeals per section 3419 of the Planning Act. Council will now hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone here to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment? Okay, seeing none, are there any final questions from council regarding this application? Okay, seeing none, the public meeting with respect to the zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded.
Move the report.
Okay, moved by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Maves, that we move the report. Any discussion to the motion? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, moving along to CD 2013-02, the Lundys Lane BIA. I see we have a number of BIA members welcome in attendance. And I would ask our city clerk if he would like to introduce this report.
Thank you, your worship. Firstly, I apologize for this report. It's fairly lengthy, although it could have been even longer. I tried to condense it. I also apologize because really, this kind of report shouldn't be necessary, in my opinion. Council should not be thrust into the role of arbiter in these internal BIA matters. The point of a BIA is to oversee the improvement, beautification, and maintenance of the public realm above what is provided by the municipality and to promote, promote the area as a business or shopping area. As I've expressed in frustration during this process, it shouldn't matter who sits on the BIA board, you should all be committed to the same thing, which is that, beautification and marketing of the, of the area. These matters really shouldn't evolve into politics. Secondly, I do want to apologize to the BIA itself. This process took longer than I certainly anticipated, and I know from a number of board members that they just want to get on with the business of the BIA. It became apparent to me early in my review that there needed to be a made-by-the-BIA solution, especially for the health and well-being of the BIA moving forward. As council will undoubtedly note, even up until this minute, this difference of opinion amongst BIA members continues, which I think makes it very difficult for, for moving forward. And I'm not sure everybody has the best interest of the BIA at heart. As indicated in my report, there was a meeting here at City Hall in December, and actually, the correct date of that was December 7th. The board members, the active board members were in attendance for a meeting related to WIGO, and we had a very frank discussion afterwards, and a consensus was arrived at to continue with the existing board complement of 10, 10 members. A schedule was to have been set, which hasn't been done yet, and I believe it's a bit disingenuous to say that that, setting of that schedule was contingent on my report. I think the best-case scenario from the council point of view would have been for the BIA to be able to come to this meeting and show that they were, they had put the past behind and they were moving forward. And still, to this date, that's not the case. I think the failure to provide the schedule in December is somewhat comparable to the issues that were surrounding the AGM in August. There were certain activities that were supposed to take place that didn't take place, unfortunately. I've talked to a number of people, and I believe without a doubt that that August meeting date for the AGM was firm and was conducted appropriately. I've confirmed this with members who I consider to be neutral on these issues. The removal of the five delinquent members is appropriate and has nothing to do with ethnicity, which has been spread through emails. I think everybody agrees that the individuals that weren't showing up to the BIA should be removed as per the BIA constitution. Any other comments or attempts to muddy the truth, in my opinion. Therefore, council can choose option number one that I outlined in the report, if they feel it's appropriate, and they can appoint those individuals who put their names forward in August. One of the other options I outlined in the report is option number four, which is the disbanding of the BIA, which I've always sort of used as a threat, hoping, hoping that that would lead to some compromise amongst the members. Although there are some procedural impediments to disbanding the BIA, I think it's a distinct possibility, especially if this dissension continues. And I think the BIA members should be clear that if the BIA was to be dissolved, that the assets of the BIA go to the municipality. They wouldn't be distributed back amongst the members. Bottom line, ultimately, the BIA is a creature of council through the municipal act. Members are there at your pleasure as council. And I apologize for the length of my speech, and I can answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. And I know that our clerk has spent a great deal of time dealing with this matter, and not necessarily a matter that he should be dealing with, but there you have it. It's dropped into our lap, and we're, we're in the middle of it, caught in the crossfire to try to help mediate a resolution to one of our BIAs. There are, there are good people up there, and they're good businesses, just they need maybe a little bit of direction and guidance. Councillor Thompson?
Thank you. I'll try to make this as short and painless as possible. First of all, it's extremely puzzling why a BIA, a business improvement area, has the history that this has had. And we've all had reams of reports and emails and discussions over the past, actually, a couple of months, but lately, more so in the last several days, about the problems that have existed, and the lack of initiative that has been taken over this period of time to bring the group together to make it all happen. And the options that were laid out, having dialogue with some of the members there, seems consistent that they're looking for option one, which takes it back to the annual general meeting that they had previously. That seems to be a good starting point, to see if they can get this all back together. It was suggested to me to ask some specific questions about some of the happenings there. It's all in detail in all of the reports and the email, and I don't think it's necessary to rehash all of that. And therefore, I'd make a motion that the council endorse option one, and provide any support we can to the BIA, and encourage them to get back to work and do the job of marketing and promoting the Lundys Lane area, which is, which has done a great job in the past several years. And just looking at the changes that have happened there, shows you what can do, what can be done when people work together. So I would so move.
Okay, we've got a motion by councillor Thompson to receive option one for approval. Councillor Carrion?
Also, I'd like to include the appointment of the one individual, the recommendation? Yes, that was included in the recommendation.
Okay. Okay, so we've got motion moved by second. Any comment, Mr. Clerk? Does that cover, or is there any aspects in the recommendation that need to be added in?
No, I'm fine with that. Obviously, councillor Wing had stepped down as the council rep. I suggest you deal with that separately, but that motion has been put on the floor as clear.
Okay, is there any other discussion to the mo, yes, councillor Wing?
I won't support the motion. I believe that option two, as the clerk recommended, is the best option. I know that the 10 people can work together. I was hoping that that's what would be happening going forward. And I know that option two is what was agreed to, according to the clerk in, in December. So, you know, that to me was an option that there was some consensus on in the not-too-recent past. It's certainly been my own position all along, and I'm afraid that there is going to be a real movement to disband the BIA. If we go with option one, so that's one thing I don't want to see, so I cannot support the motion for that reason.
Okay, thank you. Any other com, yes, councillor Carrion?
Well, your worship, option one includes adding some additional people, which gives some representation to some of the properties that contribute the most to the levy. And it's been my, my position and my experience that unless the major contributors have some say on the board, it can never be successful. So to have a board that consists of none of the major contributors of the levy is totally ridiculous in my mind, and it cannot work. The other, the other comment I had, your worship, was if they cannot make this work, there's some concern that they do have money in their kitty, and that it does go back to the city. But I think that that should not be a concern to those people in the BIA that may, if it doesn't work, I don't think there's anyone around this council table that would take that money and use it for anything other than for the improvement of Lundys Lane, or to make a motion. I'd be perfectly willing to make a motion to give it back to the people who put it up, as they, as they did.
Mr. Clerk?
Well, just, you can't give the money back to the people. The treasurer, and I talked about that, that's not possible. I mean, obviously, if worse came to worse, and the BIA was disbanded, you may want to direct a reserve fund that would go towards things like beautification in the Lundys Lane area. So, just two other things. There is a fourth recommendation in the report, which is just redirecting the BIA guidelines that council approved back in 2011 back to the BIA, to make sure that they're following them. And I think it might be helpful moving forward that part of the motion is that the council, obviously, direct the chair to set a meeting forth with.
Okay. So you okay with that? The mover and the second are agreed to have that included in the recommendation? Is there any other discussion to the motion? Okay, seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, opposed? With one opposed. So... With one opposed, so we have option one approved, and that hopefully will put this issue to rest.
They have no council rep, your worship.
Yep.
I would move that, Counselor, I know you can do it.
All in favor, Kerry? Do we have, is there anybody here that...
Do it.
What's that?
It's someone that has to be able to do.
Yeah, we need to have a member of counsel to help with the transition and work with the team at the Lundys Lane BIA. Do we have a member of counsel that's willing and has the time and that they can be a member and join the team?
Do they know when to leave?
Maybe we get some feedback. I know you haven't maybe had a regular meeting scheduled, but is there any indication, or if you don't know at this moment, can you let us know as soon as you know so that we can get a council rep involved, because it depends on when the meetings are. Yes, Mr. Rafida?
Yeah, I think maybe when the BIA schedules the meeting, I'll let the council members know, and then we can go from there. Obviously, you know, we don't want to force anybody, but, you know, when we find out the date and times of the meetings, then we can go from there.
Yeah, we won't force anybody, but we might twist a few arms. So if, the sooner you can let us know, the sooner we can get someone to join you on your board. Okay, we're good? All right, thanks very much, everyone. Okay, next up is everyone's favorite part of the meeting, it's the mayor's remarks. And starting off, I want to thank Counselor Peter Angelo and Gates for joining me at the 24th Annual Sports Wall of Fame at the Gale Center. We had...
They quieted down for the mayor's...
Yeah, they quieted down for my remarks. Did you hear that? How quickly? The protesters want to hear. Had a great day at the Sports Wall of Fame. Congratulations to all the nominees, inductees rather, and their families. I was at the donor wall unveiling at the new St. Catherine's Hospital. Wow, what a sight. If you have not had a chance to take a tour of the new hospital, take it. It's incredible, and given the fact that we can have that same kind of a facility right here, take the opportunity and tour that facility. Just incredible. I was this past week at the Niagara Community Design Awards, the Niagara Region, where we received some awards and some recognition. First of all, there was honorable mention in facade improvement to Michael Allen for his design at Antica Pizzeria. Well done. And as well, we had, we were the winners of the overall excellence award, and by the way, that is not awarded every year, just when it's deserved. And this year, the Niagara Falls Museum Design Team, including our own staff, Jeff Holman, Clark Burnett, Bob Bolbrook, as well as the architects of Morian and Toshiba from Toronto, were there to receive the award. So congratulations on all those involved. Thank you to Counselor Morocco, who represented counsel at the Toronto Chinese Media Gala Awards, and thank you to Counselor Gates, who represented city council at the Boys and Girls Club 15th Annual Bond Spiel. And as well, congratulations to our snow removal crews. I'm sure everybody here would appreciate the great job they did, given the fact that we received a record amount of snowfall on Friday. The roads were in excellent shape, all things considered, so we want to, congratulations to our snow removal teams. Special announcements, congratulations to Premier Nguyen and her new cabinet. We look forward to working together with our new provincial leadership team, Niagara Falls, in our strategic plan. We have some specific directions and asks and strategies, and we're already working with them to achieve these goals. This week, we were excited to announce that Sleep Cheap raised another $160,000 in 2012, and our thanks go to all the hoteliers. It's because of their generosity that we have such a great event to offer to all the residents. As well, hopefully, everyone, senior staff and counsel can join me and our CAO Ken Todd and our recent appointment of Kathy Moldenhauer to now officially be the Director of Recreation and Culture at the city. So congratulations, Kathy. Kathy's been in the role of Acting Director of Recreation and Culture, and it'll be a lot easier to not have to say that word "acting" anymore, so congratulations. She's done a very good job at leading her department. What's new? Well, I don't need to tell everyone, Valentine's Day is going to be this Thursday, and for those of you that haven't planned anything special, Counselor Peter Angelo knows, every Valentine's Day, I make my special meal of Vila Marcela portobello mushrooms and all the fixins for my wife, and typically it's...
What time's dinner?
Pardon me?
What time's dinner?
What time's dinner? Well, whenever you want to get there, but hopefully you won't get there too early. Which one, about the happy ending story?
The end of it.
Yeah, that one, too. Forty-eighth annual anniversary, sorry, of our national flag will be marked on February the 15th, that's this Friday, so keep that in mind when you're putting up your flags or banging on your flagpoles up front of City Hall. Family Day is this coming Monday. There's fun around the city, and if for anyone looking for things to do, the Gale Center will have free public skating from 11 until 1:00 and 2:00 until 4:00, and as well, we're going to have stick and puck for up to 40 skaters, and we're going to have that going on from 11 till 12:30 for eight and under, and from 2:30 until 4 o'clock for nine, ages nine to 14. And if you didn't get all those specifics, just go on the city's website, niagarafalls.ca, and you can find out all the particulars. And again, it's this Monday for Family Day at the Gale Center. As well, our museum will be having an 1812 adventure. This is the Niagara Falls History Museum on Ferry Street. That takes place this Monday from 1:00 until 4:00. There'll be outdoor activities for all to enjoy, dress for the winter. As well, we will have at Heartland Forest, there will be Winter Fest. It'll be free from 11 till 4:00. There'll be outdoor experiences and adventures. We're looking forward to our new Dialysis Center grand opening just next door here at the Hatch Building. That'll take place on February the 22nd at 1:30. The Niagara Cub Car Races take place at Niagara Square on Saturday, February the 23rd at noon at Center Court. And lastly, it's a reminder to everybody, and hopefully all of counsel, can find their way there, to the State of the City Luncheon, which will take place on Friday, March the 8th at the Americana. Tickets are $35 each for members, and we'd like to see everybody out there that day to see what's going on in your city and help support the business community in our city. That ends the mayor's remarks. We'll move along to commu... Yes, Mr. Clerk?
The first communication has been withdrawn, so we're just dealing with the epilepsy Niagara and the fresh air fund.
Move second, very good.
Okay, Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Maves, moves items two and three of communications. Number one, that March be proclaimed epilepsy awareness month, and secondly, that the fresh air fund day be March the 20th here in Niagara Falls. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous, thank you. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional items for counsel's consideration?
No, your worship.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Move the consent agenda.
Motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Maves, to move the consent agenda. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Wing, did you have a consent agenda item?
Yes, RNC 201303, the Canada Day location.
Okay, so we'll pull that one. Okay, so we'll move the rest of the...
Move the balance of consent agenda.
Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Maves. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. And now Counselor Wing, item RC 201303, the Niagara Falls Canada Day location.
I was just concerned that we seem to be ignoring the community. I mean, we solicited their input through the surveys and, you know, half the participants wanted the parade on Morrison Street, 36% wanted the event at Oaks Park, and I can understand the logistical problems with a fire station being located there, and, you know, as much as I'd love to see it on Morrison Street, still just going the other way and the event at Oaks Park, I can appreciate the concerns there, but we also had a forum at the, one of our facilities, where was it? Anyhow, there was a forum back in September, and people from throughout the community who actually are involved in putting on Canada Day and putting on the Canada Day display tables came out and took part and came up with, you know, a very clear-cut set of, you know, where they wanted to see it, and I thought, I remember hearing about it right after thinking, yeah, that's a great choice, Niagara Square and McBain Center, I'm sorry, yeah, McBain. It just made sense to me, and now we're ignoring the result of that. Like, why did we bother dragging people from the community out to a forum if we're not going to pay attention to that or the survey and just go with something else altogether? So I have a bit of an issue with trying to engage the community and then saying, thanks, but no thanks, and just tossing out what they told us.
Hey, maybe we can ask Ms. Moldenhauer, our Director of Recreation and Culture, to comment?
Thank you, Mayor. The information that we collected in the survey and the forum, we also shared with senior staff because, for example, with the parade, we did check with transportation because if we were to implement a parade, for example, along Montrose, if we were going to go into McBain or into Niagara Square, it would definitely impact on the level of bus service, where the recommended location this year to be downtown. We currently already have the Santa Claus Parade going down Queen Street, so we do have an established parade route that works well with our partners, and we have the support of the other departments. The recommendation for you tonight in this report, it's only for one year, because we agree, we did hear a lot from the community, there were other locations that were recommended, so we do want to, we have to pick, one, we have to pick a location quickly, because it's coming up pretty quick and we have to start the planning, so that's why we are going with downtown for this year only, but we plan to review how the day works in the fall and to look at future locations. One recommendation that we had is we could actually move the event all around the city and go to some of the other recommended locations in the future.
Counselor?
I don't know, to me, it just doesn't make sense to engage the community and then ignore what the community has told you. You know, if we can't go with the Morrison Street to Oaks Park preference that was indicated to us in the survey, then at least let's go with what was indicated by the forum at the McBain Center in September. You know, we have 40 people come out from the community who are involved in putting on Canada Day, and they told you something pretty clearly, and you're not going to listen to them. It just, it bothers me, and I just can't support doing anything different.
Okay. Any other questions of counsel, Counselor Gates?
For Counselor Wing, I think it's fair comment, but I believe that when I read the report, unfortunately, it can't be at Ockham's Park this year for reasons out of our control, but I think if you read the report, it says that we'll try it out for this year and obviously take a look at other locations as well. I think that was in the report as well, but I think your comments are extremely fair. You engage the community, and then you really do something totally different, but I think when you read the entire report and you see some of the reasons why they didn't have it at some of those locations, I think some of those comments are fair, too. So try it one year, and if we think we should move it, we can always move it to a different location.
Okay, any other discussion on the consent agenda item? Okay, well, what's the will of counsel? Counselor Morocco?
To move the recommendation.
Okay, moved by Counselor Morocco. So we have a seconder, Counselor Maves. Any discussion to the motion? We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, one opposed? Okay, in camera, Mr. Clerk, do we have any...
Resolution, please.
Oh, okay, sorry about that. There's a resolution basically entering into a contribution agreement regarding the redevelopment of Prince Charles Park. Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. Any discussion to the resolution? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous? All right, now, in-camera matters. Mr. Rafida?
Actually, I suggest we move this around and deal with the property matter first, and then we'll deal with the in-camera, so the matter related to the declaration of surplus of part of Block A should probably take place first, just makes more sense sequentially.
I'm agreeing with your report, declaring it surplus. I'll second.
Okay, Counselor Thompson moves, and Counselor Peter Angelo seconds. The report out, 201301 Declaration of Surplus Land, part of Block A, Plan M67. Any discussion, anyone here in attendance for that issue? Okay, seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous?
So, your worship, with regard to in-camera matters, actually, two things. We had a special in-camera meeting last Tuesday, and from that meeting, recommendation that staff be directed to sign the minutes of settlement related to the casino assessment appeal, and from earlier this evening, that the property that we just declared surplus be conveyed to DATS Niagara Incorporated, known as Marine Clean, owner of 6220 Don Murray Street, they're the property that abuts it for the price that had been outlined to counsel. Mr. Beaman, I think, has an additional question.
Just to be technically correct, members of counsel, it's just a part that's going to be conveyed of all your declared surplus. You declared the entire yellow part surplus, and the black part is going to be conveyed.
Everybody understand? Okay, we're looking for a motion? Now, is this for ratification?
Yes.
A motion of ratification of in-camera? Okay, Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor...
No, just a question.
Yes?
Will we split the two?
Yeah, you want to split the two?
Please.
Okay, which one you want to deal with first, Mr. Clerk?
So, from the February 5th meeting, which is staff be directed to sign the minutes of settlement regarding the casino assessment appeal?
Okay, Counselor Peter Angelo moves it, seconded by Counselor Carrio. Okay, any discussion to that motion? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous?
No.
Oh, you're opposed, Counselor Gates is opposed. All right, yes, are you opposed, too? Opposed, Counselor Gates, Counselor Morocco are opposed, and...
And then from tonight, the approval of the sale for the part of the lot.
Okay, surplus land, moved Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Maves. Yes, Counselor Gates?
Yeah, Mayor, do you have that? Just a quick question, I've asked this question continuously. The appraisal was $9,900, I believe, on the land?
Thanks.
That's correct? Where are we at on having somebody handle all our properties in the city? I've made that comment a number of times, and just seeing, just getting an update, seeing we're doing it again, I just thought I'd ask.
Mr. CEO, did you want to answer that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would. Seriously, Mayor, we are working on that. We're looking at opportunities within our existing complement, so as different positions become available. Our HR department's currently working on a job description, so you'll probably hear something back from us in the next month or two on that.
Thanks very much.
Is his name Mr. Beaman? Pardon me? Is his name Mr. Beaman? Mr. Beaman? No.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous, thank you. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional bylaws or amendments for tonight?
No, your worship.
Motion to introduce the bylaws first?
Counselor Peter Angelo moves introduction of the bylaws for a first reading, seconded by Counselor Maves. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous?
Bylaws 2013-13 to 2013-20, we're at a second and third time.
Second and third, your worship.
Motion by Counselor Peter Angelo for a second and third reading of the bylaws, seconded by Counselor Maves. Any discussion to the motion? All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous?
Bylaws 2013 to 2013-13 to 2013-20, we're at a second and third time and passed.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. New business of counsel? Counselor Thompson?
Yes, thank you. I've been dealing with a concern that was brought to my attention a couple of weeks ago, and there has been a letter sent through to the clerk with respect to this matter to the mayor members of counsel, and I believe the clerk is dealing with that with respect to investigating some of the issues regarding this complaint. And when I first received this, I was in disbelief. The complaint was basically that there was, and I know how much work has been done by the fire department in the past, doing police work with respect to marijuana grow-ups, anyway, which I didn't agree with personally. Anyway, the person who brought this to my attention was claiming that there was a grow-up next door to them. There were all kinds of incidents with respect to that, but when it was investigated, it was found that they were licensed and it was legal in a residential area in a Quonset hut that had been built specifically for this. Anyway, I couldn't believe that this could happen. Anyway, apparently, it exists throughout our municipality legally, and when there are complaints with respect to that, nothing can be done. And I would just like, through the counsel, to find out, obviously, it's the federal government can introduce and pass legislation that directly affects a municipality in residential areas, that they can legalize something without having any input from the municipality, either zoning or at least notification with respect to this. So I have a letter here, which hopefully the clerk will circulate, and he's going to... to respond to it in an appropriate manner through his investigation. But in the meantime, I'd like to have a resolution through the clerk, through the government, to find out how this can actually happen in our municipality. There are many issues with respect to this one regarding noise and other problems associated with it, but we'll wait for a further comment back from the clerk. But I would really like to zero in on how this is going to happen, when we've been fighting this issue legally and with success in the past, and all of a sudden, this is legal. So I would so move.
Okay, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. Counselor Wing?
Friendly amendment, we add telecommunications towers in with that, because it's a very similar situation. I think I've heard more complaints about telecommunications towers in residential neighborhoods than, you know, growing of marijuana in residential neighborhoods. So if we can bundle the two as a friendly amendment, I'll support it.
Would you rather have two separate motions, maybe?
No, I think they're two totally separate issues. Utilizing the substance may help you hear better, but I don't think it's going to have anything to do with what I'm attempting to do here.
All right, any other discussion on the motion? Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo, that a resolution be sent to the federal government in regard to illegal marijuana grow-ups. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Yes, Counselor Wing?
And that we also send a correspondence to the federal government about telecommunications towers. Being allowed in the municipality without having to go through planning first.
We've done that. The clerk, did you want to comment, Mr. Clerk?
It gets raised every time we have one of them. We've done that. We've given council's opinion on the issue to the federal government, Industry Canada, on two occasions already.
Is there other new business from council? Yes, Counselor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, Your Worship. Probably about a month ago, we dealt with the rezoning on Montrose Road. There was a piece of property that was asking to change from industrial to residential. I guess our official plan doesn't really allow for it to be changed over, and I'm sure you're well aware of the application. Council nonetheless approved the application. It had been residential before. It had kind of flipped back and forth from industrial to residential, back to industrial, and then now back to residential. The property owner has owned it for, I believe, 20-plus years, and has never been able to sell it for industrial purposes. That was one of the reasons why we supported the change to residential. Planning staff at the region has now appealed the application, so the actual application to appeal will go in front of regional council. And much like we've done in other applications, I think it would be prudent of us to send a letter to regional council advising them of our position, just asking them to respect the decision that we've made. And even, Your Worship, that, I know yourself, you're quite aware of the situation, but that the other three regional councillors that we have in Niagara Falls be made aware as well. So I would make that motion.
Okay, motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Gates. You got that, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, we did.
All right, that we just remind the region where we stand on this rezoning issue specifically, as well as the rest of the regional councillors from Niagara Falls. Okay, any discussion to the motion? All those in favor? Okay, opposed? Opposed, okay. All right, yes, Counselor Peter Angelo?
Your Worship, just one other item. We had a committee of adjustment meeting on Tuesday, and I know there's some people around the table that are familiar with the application that we dealt with. It's an application, or it was an application, to put a commercial coffee shop at the corner of St. James' and Bellstone Grove. Needless to say, at the meeting, there was probably, I don't know, anywhere from 40 to 60 residents that showed up. But one of the astounding things was, and I mean, I've been on committee adjustments for a number of years, we had probably the most letters I've ever seen come to Susiro, our secretary from City Hall, our planning secretary. And they weren't just, and they weren't just one or two lines, they were actual full-page letters that talked about the traffic problems that exist on St. James' Avenue right now. So one of the thoughts that I had was, I mean, whether or not the commercial establishment goes forward, there's still going to be that existing traffic problem. And then we've taken areas in the city before, and we've kind of given them over to our traffic department to do a study on the area and to try to come up with some ways, I guess, to mitigate the traffic problems. I'm just wondering through yourself, perhaps to Mr. Dren, whether or not that would be possible to do in this situation? I know there's a couple partners out there, there's the public school board, there's the Catholic school board, and that at times exacerbates the problem. We even had a bus driver come out to the meeting and explain to us the problem when the buses are trying to get off of St. James' Avenue. I didn't even know, he was telling the whole committee and everyone that was there at the meeting, that school buses are not allowed to go in reverse when they're on a municipal roadway. So he says what happens sometimes is he goes to, you know, make his way around a car, and another car's coming forward, and he has to hit the brakes. And within 10 seconds, that car on the other side of the road has four or five cars behind them. And everyone's looking at him, and legally, he cannot put his bus in reverse and back up, so he doesn't. So it becomes a bit of a traffic jam. So, I mean, whether or not anything happens with that commercial establishment on the corner, I think there still exists a traffic problem, and that's what I'm trying to say, and I think that's what all the residents were trying to say. So I guess through you, to Mr. Dren, I'm not sure if you're aware that there is a traffic problem out there, or even if we have the means to have a look at it and sort of bring in some of the partners that are around there.
Mr. Dren?
Yes, through the mayor, yes, we can look at it, we can investigate it, and see what we can do there.
And I guess as a good basis, Your Worship, would be all the correspondence from the committee of adjustment meeting. I mean, there had to be at least 30 letters from residents that live in the area, as well as people from the school that the kids go to. Thanks very much. Do you need a motion for that, Your Worship? I prefer to make a motion.
All right, so why don't you make the motion?
That it be sent over to the traffic department to investigate, and perhaps come back to council with the report on ways that we can mitigate the problems that exist in the traffic over there.
Okay, moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Maves. Any discussion to the motion? All those in favor? Okay, oh, Counselor Maves, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say too, that that series of streets are all very narrow, and I think too, if anybody's considering any commercial enterprises in that area, they really have to consider the width of those streets, because they are very narrow.
Definitely, they are. Yes, Counselor Peter Angelo?
Your Worship, he's right. I mean, they are narrow, and the other thing is, I mean, you know, the schools were built sort of predating busing. I mean, when they were built, you know, the means for buses dropping off were not actually there. So now, I mean, that the buses are at the school, it kind of presents a problem as well. So anything that we can do to help, Your Worship, would be great.
Any other discussion to that? Do we have any other new business? Okay, I do have a new business item I'd like to bring up, and I would ask council if they would support with the motion. In the name of customer service, I've had some challenges, you know, the mayor's office always receives the calls about any issues people have in the community. And there's some common bylaw infringements that people are breaking certain bylaws, they're not even aware of it. And part of our go-forward, we're going to have a communication piece soon for council's consideration, that'll help educate the public to some of the bylaws. And I'll give you an example of a couple that, the average person I find, when they call, they have no idea. One is, and some of you may or may not be aware, you probably receive calls, if you park in your driveway and your car, even the bumper of your car sticks out over the sidewalk, that's a $50 ticket. And it doesn't matter if it's 2:00 in the morning, you've received one, Counselor Gates, so you know all about it then, right? Okay, it's 50 bucks. And it's one thing if it's a blatant disregard for the bylaw, it's another thing if you have no idea about it. It's not a commonly known item. Another one is parking overnight. Now, that's another one that a lot of people don't realize. All you have to do is call the service center, let them know, and you can park. So someone's had too much to drink, you know, you're not telling them, drive your car home, you're going to get a ticket. You're saying, no, no, it's okay, call it in. Or if you're getting your driveway redone, you can park it out in the street, not get a ticket. Another item is parking on the apron of your driveway. You know, some people park sideways in the apron of the driveway. That's actually not allowed under our bylaw. There's a lot of these types of bylaws. So typically, we've got well-meaning but uninformed residents that come in, they're law-abiding, they're honest, they don't realize they're breaking the rule. And you get some seniors really, really emotional and upset. They've never had a ticket in their life, and they come in, they don't even know they're breaking, they feel really like they have a blemish on the record. So all I'm asking is, if we could ask, maybe have one of council make a motion, have parking and traffic come back with a report that gives a warning for first-time offenders of these little-known bylaws, such as the ones that I referenced. I mean, if it's blatant disregard, they already know about it, so be it. Yes, Counselor Morocco? And if it, but the advantage we have now with the computer system, we can enter it into the computer, we know that they've been given a warning, and it can be an automatic. They know right away if anyone's had a ticket, they know if they've had a warning. So we do have the technology today that we didn't have at one time. So I put that out there for your consideration. Counselor Morocco?
If you're looking for a motion, I'll make that motion. I think that it's only in fairness that they actually are aware that there's a bylaw in place, but also, we have to make sure that we're still looking out for the safety, because if they're hanging over the sidewalks and it's on the path of children's route to schools, I think we've had this conversation already through our messaging, that that's a concern too. So we have to also look at, that safety is always our first measure here. So yes, I will actually support making a motion to first-time offenders.
Okay, was it, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Mr. Dren?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of points to some of the suggestions or some of the comments. With regards to the overnight parking bylaw, we advertise that extensively. It goes out, and we have, at the beginning of the season, when the snow removal season happens, we go out and give three weeks of warnings, and we advise people what they can do. You know, they can call the service center, they can do all kinds of things. So we do that. We put multiple ads in the paper, it's on our website. It's clearly a bylaw that's been in the city for many years, at least for the 25 years I've been here. And especially this time of year, it's one that affects snow plowing, and the complaints that come because their neighbors parked on the street overnight and the snowplow leaves a big windrow pile of snow in front of their driveway are really something that our staff deals with on a regular basis. The second thing, as Counselor Morocco had indicated, is the reason why, and when we talk about strictness and zero tolerance, nine times out of 10, we do give a warning. In the case where it's blatant, where a driver has left their vehicle totally blocking the sidewalk and is now forcing pedestrians to walk on the road, we issue tickets. And the number of complaints and people that come to the counter and say, listen, you know what, my bumper was overhanging the sidewalk. Well, we take a photo with every overnight parking, and we illustrate to them that it's clearly you were blocking the entire sidewalk and therefore forcing pedestrians on the street. So that's really a safety issue. With regards to technology, our current technology doesn't allow for what you're saying. We are, have approved in the budget, a replacement of the handheld units that we have that will allow us to do that technology in the future, which is a few months down the road. But right now, we don't have the ability to track drivers based on, okay, they were given a ticket before, and now we shouldn't, now we can give one, or we never gave a warning. We don't have that technology as of yet. So there's, I mean, really just providing some comments. We do extensive overnight parking advertising, and we do give a lot of warning tickets as they exist today. The safety one is really the issue that concerns us.
One thing I would, did comment to this, because, and here's my thinking on it. For example, if you have a car parked over the sidewalk and you give them a ticket, the safety issue still exists. Whether you give them a warning or a ticket, the safety issue doesn't change, unless you're going to tow them away, which we don't do. If you park out in the street and the window's around you and you give them a ticket or you give them a warning, that doesn't change, nothing changes, the safety doesn't change. So it comes down to, it looks like a cash grab. And I believe in the name of good customer service, you give them the benefit of the doubt. I'll tell you, share a little story with you before. I parked when I had my, when I had my trucking business, I parked out on the street one day, I got in late from out of town, I parked out in the street. And I got to my truck the next morning early, and there was something on my windshield, and I thought, oh. I was ticked, I thought I got a ticket. I got a ticket for something. And I got there, and it was a warning, and it was a magnet. Until the day I sold the business, I had that magnet on my dash, I never did it again. But it was a good wake-up, because I didn't aware, I wasn't aware. I was proud of myself, too. And so I would suggest that good customer service will go a long way. And then, if they do it, I say, then, you know, shame on you. But if they don't know, and I can tell you, I know the paper, you know, only a certain amount of people read it, only a certain amount of people go to the website. I think the only real way is to give someone a fair opportunity. I don't know, Mr. CEO, did you have a suggestion?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I don't think there's any sense in asking for a report. I think if you want to have us issue warnings, we can do that. Mr. Dren has indicated there'll be new technology coming in the next couple of months. I think if you want to give us direction, that that would be what you want to do, but to have a report come back, I think you just pass a motion to go ahead and do it, and Mr. Dren can report on how we can track it, with the new technology that we happen to get.
Okay, so Counselor Morocco, are you good with that?
Yes.
Okay, moved by Counselor Morocco, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo.